Read over top of.
Turn your microphones on, please.
That means the red button should be lit, not green, but red.
It's a red light, no button.
We will call this meeting to order, and Commissioner Olga, would you lead us in the pledge today?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Constitution of this state, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Commissioner O'Rourke.
Present.
Commissioner Rexroth.
Present.
Chairman Wessel.
Here.
Commissioner Ross.
Here.
Commissioner Olgaier.
Here.
Commissioner Lautner.
Present.
All present.
Thank you. We have a proposed agenda. The item 2A is being removed from the agenda at the request of Sutton's Bay. Right?
Correct, and I will be working on a study or a lunch session that they can be here. I'm not going to have them coming at your regular meeting. This is all our budgets, so.
Motion to approve the agenda as amended. Support?
All those who support that motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We have an agenda approved. Six zero. Thank you. At this time, we have an opportunity for a three-minute agenda-specific public comment. If any of you would like to speak, please let us know. Thank you very much for being here. There'll be another opportunity at the end of this meeting.
Any commissioner comments?
Well, I just have one. Going through this budget book a little bit since last week, I'm just concerned that this is mid-September, and this was our first look at it, so I'm just hoping we don't rush it. And they take more meetings. There's a lot to digest in here, and I just hope we don't rush this process because of the time frame.
Agreed. Right, Kathy? Well, I think, Richard, you're starting us off?
Well, I'm gonna start you off. I think I always gave you my little overview last week. Yes, you received this last week, and yeah, we're probably late in getting started. Although I did see something mentioned a year ago where there was meetings being held in September. But we have it set up by our schedule. Hopefully, you may get a position that you could consider adoption if you're ordering the meetings. But again, I will remind you that you do not have to adopt this budget until December. Well, you have to adopt it by January 1st, 2025.
Stop that.
So you're gonna have to do that. We have set up a series of meetings that we can go through. After today's meeting, you'll try to give us a clue of what you want to go through next, and we will try to prepare you to go through that as efficiently as we can. But yes, you can look at that. Now, to be honest with you, some of you have been through this more than once on this budget. And again, I'll give thanks to Kathy. I think if you go through your revenue summary and your expenditure summary, especially for the federal fund, which is the primary, probably 75%, if not more, of all your revenue streams and your expenditure streams, I think you'll see that for the most part, except for some areas, we have, which we'll get into when we get into those federal funds. You'll see everybody, most of the stuff is pretty much status quo for what you had in the year. I mean, day-to-day operations, paying the water bills, paying the heat bills, paying salaries, there's not a whole lot of changes. A couple of items that you've already approved, which was dealt with in finance department, you approved earlier in the year, as it relates to the facilities director, you have already approved that position. And then when Glenn has some questions, you know, as it relates to how we put this into the budget, we put it at the top of the grade, that's the thing that's where we're going to do. That's what we'll pay anyone until we get a candidate. But you have allowed administration to evaluate what that individual brings to the table for us. If it comes in here with like 30 years of experience in it, yeah, you may want to pay higher, but if it's somebody that's only been out for five years to have the talent to move forward, we'll probably start at a little lower. Until we go through that process, that's what we do. We've done that with both our HR manager and as well as with the assistant finance director. We didn't take it to the top of the grade, but we know that there's potential that they will bring, there's great potential that they will bring to the county over the month. So we're just happy to have it. Today, what we'd like to cover are some of the items that are in no kind of specific in here, but there are items that you still need to discuss, and then we can incorporate those numbers as we move forward, because we have not. And the first item that we're gonna want to talk about is our capital outlay, and as well as what I put in here, about 2% grants, as you will see on your agenda next week, that county officials, county offices are wanting to apply or want their recommendations applied. So with that though, we have two outside requests of the county to consideration. One, of course, dealt with the voters of Sutton's Bay as it relates to entering into an agreement, as it relates to entering to a TIF plan, a five-year TIF plan, for a project that they have going forward. And they said, you've got the letter that you have, the village manager's letter and all that. You can see what he's requesting, but give him the due respect to let them come here and explain the progress, and you can ask him questions and what they want. The other one, we have Ms. Anita Chirard.
Chirard.
Chirard, I'm sorry.
No, you're good.
Yeah, she'll know that. She's here from the Traverse Area District Library. She's wanting to talk about the Talking Book Library and asking for a request for funding. And instead of me trying to explain it, I heard, of course, most of you have probably heard that they have received a national award or been recognized by the peers on the national level for this service.
And also, I think your dad was my kindergarten bus driver.
John?
Uh-huh.
Yes, that would be right there.
Now, you can't hold that against her.
Oh, no.
No, he was the dad.
Everybody loved my dad, yes.
Yeah, he was the dad. Next door, my mom. It's a school bus driver.
So, yes, my name is Anita Chirard, and I'm here today to share an overview of the Larry Gordon Talking Book Library. We are part of the National Library Service, which falls under the Library of Congress. And like he mentioned, we were chosen by the National Library Service as 2024 AOC Library of the Year, which was a great one. Our mission at the Talking Book Library is to ensure that individuals with disabilities have access to reading materials. We provide free audio and audio materials to anyone who has a visual, physical, or reading disability, and all materials and equipment are mailed directly to their home at no cost. Additionally, our patrons can access our digital resources through what we call a Bard app, which allows them to download audio or audio materials to their devices. We currently serve 36 patrons in Leilunah County. They are all but one in existence. These individuals have circulated over 4,300 items, and the value of this service per patron is approximately $4,735.44 annually. Your contribution will allow us to do more for your patrons, including outreach and some free programming. I currently work closely with several organizations, such as libraries in your area. They are what we call demo sites. They have some of our equipment that they can show, that they can come in, that they can make these services. They can sign them up for it. I also have attended a senior expo through your senior services, and I visit currently two senior living facilities in your areas, Cedar Creek and Orchard Creek monthly. I bring live print and some of our audiobooks to some of my patients that are there. If you have any questions for me, any you want to add?
Yes.
Sure.
We have had this request in the past, and I think we funded it in the past two different budgets. I think it's just a wonderful program, and it would make sense to me for us to fund this, but just pull it out of senior services, have the senior services budget funded.
But it may not be all senior services.
All but one.
All but one.
And, yeah.
What is the total amount of the request?
Just the 4,730.
Per individual?
Well, no, just.
Okay.
We either could cut the senior services and do it, or talk to the senior services and see if they just fund it on their budget. But if we go back and evaluate, and it's not, do we have permission, please come back with an alternative?
I don't necessarily agree with that. I think we need to talk to senior services and see if they have an extra five grand laying around, or if they would have to cut any of their programs in order to do this. I don't see any reason to have to. I'm not sure.
That's what I said, we'll have a conversation with them. But I'm hearing your sense is that you concur that this is a worthwhile investment. How we pay for the investment, leave it to us, but first choice is senior services. But we will talk to them first and see if not, but if they don't have enough, then we'll come back to you with an option.
Yeah, I don't want them cutting anything in order to do this.
Well, we thought, right now, face it, we thought senior services is spending a lot of money through shared care, and that's not necessarily the intent of our senior services mileage. So these are vulnerable, right? Our senior services should provide assistance to our most vulnerable, and I think that this is definitely the case.
Well, it's, and I can't let this statement stand, that what we're doing with shared care is not necessary or a good thing.
Not in total.
Yes, I agree with our administrator.
Commissioner Rexroth?
Yeah, I'll agree with the approach. I can't guarantee I didn't support it if it has to come from somewhere else. I agree it's a needed thing, but we start this, the very first thing, we decide we don't have priorities. Everything cannot be a priority. Part of the budget process is choices. And so maybe if you want something that you think is more important than something else, you have to sacrifice something that you think is less important than someone else. So I think that's something we need to look at as we go through this process. I want to start off right away with the idea, well, everything that's good, we're doing, and we'll just send the bill to taxpayers, so.
This is serving our most vulnerable.
I'm not saying it shouldn't be done at all. This is.
I'm optimistic that senior services will probably give it a priority, and we'll wait and hear back from our administrator on that conversation. That work? I'll hop with that, and next week we'll.
I want to thank her for coming, Mr. Chirard, because I think it was important for her to represent the program to herself rather than hearing us share our information. I think it's really valuable to do some of that. Thank you.
Thank you for what you do.
Before you leave.
Can I just share? I agree, this is a hugely important program, and I would fully support finding the money to help support this. And I just want to say, my first job as a 15-year-old with a work permit was for my public library outside of Chicago, and I assisted our talking book departments. That was my job, and I learned so much. So thank you for the work you did.
Thank you.
And congratulations on your award.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Now, Michelle, she was a chicken. Michelle and I go way back.
All right. With that, we'll get down to some of the fun stuff, and that's fair, you know, with, I know you want to review, yes, and we have major discussions, is our capital outlay. First of all, there's a, as part of the handout, I don't know if it goes within your package, I wanted to review where you are as it relates to this page right here. It doesn't have all the updates. It doesn't have what's printed on the page. But when you get down through here, and I'm starting the pending statutory commitments.
Just a minute. Where are you? You're gonna have to be a little more specific.
In the front of your book, there's capital and commitments. There's two pages. I don't want you to go through this.
In your.
In your folder.
Up here, in the pocket.
On the shorter page right there.
You're on the shorter page.
Yes. This is what we did in June, early in June, 2024. And what we're showing to you is what's left. Everything else you have completed or have completed. The pending statutory commitments that you have, and I'm starting on the second pink item or the third pink item, because those are the general fund items that we have out there. Everything else has got its own separate fund, such as the DTR fund, that's a whole separate program, but I'm focusing more on the general fund. And so you could get that back to work with that. But you still have some commitments as I was saying, as it relates to some drainage issues, some drainage districts, and those are what's out there. The other items that are still there is the Leal Hall Dam roof and walkway. We will be receiving those bids at the end of this week. You'll be making some decisions on those at your, we'll give you an update, but October 8th meeting that will ask you to award a bid. So we're gonna be opening the business on Friday. The other one deals with the government center north facade. We'll be opening those bids in about two weeks, and we'll be bringing those back to you for your consideration also. So if it relates to your current year, if we award these bids in the coming weeks, you will have completed everything that was on your list. Starting out 2024.
With the exception of the drain districts. These are line items pointed off in the drain commissioner's general fund budget. We front the construction for the engineering costs to DDEI, and then when those drain districts become a drain, then they go up the financing, and they'll pay the general fund back.
Pay it back.
We're not that far. So we keep fronting money for these engineering costs out of the general fund until the time they get their financing and the assessment starts. Then you make your prepayment, which you've done before. On the company's portion, the plumbing comes in, and we get paid back. But you just need to know that this, we're not that far. It's still moving forward. And then if, like Richard said, you decide that you are going to award the dam walkway, and you're going to award the facade in 2024, these will be considered projects at that point. You will have a budget remunerated for '24, and we will be utilizing the contingency for, your contingency set in '24 is for $500,000. We hit it for $25,000 so far, and that was to fund motor pool to buy the vehicles before auction. So I think you're going to be making these projects in '24, and we will budget those out. So just.
Congratulations on completing, because there are other items on the list also. And you know, we don't have them on, but they've been completed. They're done and paid, so congratulations. That was your, an update of where you are today. I understand, Glenn, that the last item down here was the law family, meaning the bird, that it appears that it's likely, meaning that $1.1 million is not going to be required at this point.
We are working now on getting the broadband equity access deployment fund monies. I know, say that again. For a long time, I said broadband equity access something or other, because deployment made no sense to me. But anyways, it is being deployed. We're hoping that process has not begun, but the quotes that we got to finish, the last remaining unserved people, was pretty astronomical. So I have been very persistent about that request, but I did not have the guts to, nor did I want to ask for that much money.
In answer to Mr. Lewis's question, though, we won't need $1.1 million, right?
I am 95% sure. No, we're not gonna ask for that.
So just for clarification, I mean, does that mean we'll need $995,000? I'd like a little bit more detail on that answer.
You know how hard it is for me to back off from this request.
Yes, but I'm just trying to get, is this like a.
I'm stepping down.
You are optimistic that the project is going to be completed, all of those federal dollars?
I like that. Thank you.
Okay, that's the question, that's the, I guess.
If you recall, that $1.1 million would be the worst-case scenario if the RADA board had gone through. This was going to be, and we hoped it would get negotiated lower, but it stuck with pin in the summer because we were leaning on that RADA. And so that was the worst case at that point, because it sounds like we're going down another road, and there's still, you know. We just need to know, are we going to maintain a pin in another?
Don't maintain a pin.
Oh, really?
Someone, I can't. Was her mic on? Said with love.
It took me a little while. That's good news. That's really good news.
Okay, so that raises two little longer sheet of different items that are on your list that you need to discuss, and what people are going to be hoping for, not hoping for, and I don't know how to do this. Here in the Board of Public Works, you can start at the top of the list, you see there's a number of.
Are they commissioners?
Board of Commissioners, BOC. Huh?
Okay.
Mr. BBDW.
He doesn't say. I said Board of Public Works, so Board of Commissioners, BOC.
All right, got it.
These are, again, it's almost like the request, and I think this is almost like the request that you had with the library. These are programs that have come to you in some time that you've agreed to assist in moving forward. They're all very good programs. There's not a bad one in the box. I'm just, as you said, that's some of our worries. You're, does that read this? Veterans' Fair Contract will be expiring at the end of this year, and so if you want to redo that, but you're anticipating that you want, but there's an increase in the Branch Rivers County, there's an increase of the cost of $10,000. Most of that covers all the grants, the grants that they go after on our behalf and spend here in Leal County on our behalf. You have the soldiers and relief fund, we've increased, you know, that period started at 5,000, we came back at 5,000. So we're recommending that you continue with the $10,000. Veterans' War Memorial, Veterans' Burials increase, you know, $200 per. It is what it costs to intern it and that individual. And then you have the other two that we've been talking, the one that you'll talk about later is the voters of Sutton's Bay, and then, of course, the Traverse Area District Library. Next, so those are out there. We're assuming that you want to continue those, but that's what is like the veterans, that's the contract we have on Branch Rivers County. Veterans' Fair, that's what is going to be needed to continue those services.
Can I just add something for clarification for them? Please? Please? I'm asking you. Just as you're looking at these items, even though they're under here, under BOC, just remember, as you look through your budget, that soldiers and sailors relief has its own budget. Veterans' burial has, these aren't items that are necessarily charged to the Board of Commissioners, but they fall under his.
Well, they fall under the general fund.
They're under the general fund, but not under the Board of Commissioners budget. They all have their own separate within the general fund. Just want to make sure when you're looking, that it's not going to get you.
Most of these items in here are general fund items. So you're gonna pay for them, and we have, some of these we've included, especially on the capital projects we have. But these are, the top ones are things, they may not fall underneath your budget, but they do fall within the general fund budget, which is, again, that's the mainstay. That's it. You know, all the other funds are great, but the general fund's the one that the world gets upset over if you don't, you know, if you don't keep it right. That's the one that I've always stayed focused on more. Of course, I also have utilities. Yes.
Well, we need to put an asterisk beside the Village of Sutton's Bay, the DDA. We told them no once before, and I see you're back. So that has, there's a discussion there.
You haven't said yes, you haven't said yes to all of them. Yeah, I'm making this a.
My guess is my point. I'm saying yes to all of them, except for that one right now.
Yeah, I understand.
Kathy, I have a question on the Veterans' Fair. You got a letter, I think, from Michael. Is this the amount he requested?
Yeah, between Administrator of Branch Rivers County and Michael, they felt a three-year renewal, that $10,000 increase would be sufficient. It would be static for three years, so it'd be 56 and change. And that was so that he would continue applying for the Veterans' Grant in the state of Michigan, and we take that for us through our office as the grant policy now aligns.
So just a question. Again, I see that the motor pool vehicles we want to has a total for that line item, but I don't see totals on any of the rest of this, nor a total total. I think would be very helpful to this board as we're looking at.
And that's fair. Now, motor pool is a fund, so you think of that as a satellite of the general fund. It has its own funding source, which is the per charge or the charge per mile of vehicles, and it falls in there. The reason we put that total there is that that fund is what actually buys the cars. So it's not the general fund. The charges to the general fund are on the vehicle usage line item, and each individual budget that has a motor pool car.
Gotcha.
So that was an important total, so immediately we would have enough cash in that fund, and you would have to supplement, like you did this year, with 25,000 from the contingency. So there is sufficient with these estimates that this would be, it would be, you could purchase these vehicles with your motor pool fund, have enough, and not have to supplement that with general fund like you did this year. So that's why we put that there. In the end, some of these things, you know, I'd say this is where you have to make a decision about the general fund as a whole. Right now, we're going to say yea or nay, and then, you know, for concept, and then we can give you a figure on that general.
I assume this exists in an Excel spreadsheet. Can you forward it to Excel, because it'd be really easy to add a little second column and things that people think they've agreed doing. Somewhere at the bottom, okay, we all have smiled at each other, and so far we redo $795 million for the additional expense or whatever the number is.
And these meetings are yea or nay. You know, you're not making decisions. It's consensus. If there's a strong, you're like, we're not gonna oppose that, but we agree.
But going back to the priority thing, it'd be really nice for me to be able to track what the yays have added up to at this point, because it might affect a nay later down the list. I mean, that just seems like a good information to have.
Well, so then, you know, that being said, and I agree with that, should we be going back up to the top and, you know, making some points so that you have some direction? Okay, okay.
We're making notes on here so that we can get these, you know, get them to where they're easier for you to follow. Of course, it'll also be something that will be in place for Kathy and the administrator. Next year, is any ready to prepare the budget for you to do it, what people like to see.
Sure. So Veterans' Fair Contract.
We're gonna continue to go through your book. And of course, this whole thing, until you adopt it, well, in my opinion, and how I treat it, is a work and process. So the day you adopt the budget, it's a work and process. Nothing's final until you vote it.
Okay.
Okay, or you. So just.
I'm good with the Veterans' Fair Contract.
So I'm not.
Let's establish a ground rule. This is a work session instead of a formal meeting. So if nobody's talking, just ask a question.
So the motor pool, we don't need any basic cars. So, the motor pool, we don't need any basic cars this year?
Yeah.
Yes.
They're all listed.
So, they're not in the, where are they?
Two patrol, animal control vehicles.
Well, I mean, okay, so there's two patrol cars, but the rest are all trucks.
Now, there's a jail transport, which is a van.
Animal control truck.
Animal control truck is a truck. The Chevrolet Silverado is a substantial truck, because it's the one that will plow.
Right.
And we already, if you recall, last year, when you were asked about vehicles, they asked for a plow truck last year, and you said no.
Right.
You pushed it off a year, so you already pushed a car or a truck off one year, just reminding you, tough love. And then, we also have a new drain commissioner coming on, and he has been taking handed down cars for decades, and the one that is handed down to him now was a marine truck. Normally, he gets the animal control truck, the drain commissioner does, but this animal control truck that is being sent out is going to say goodbye. We put more repairs into it than is necessary, and I think that the recommendation from the sheriff's office is, don't give it to the drain commissioner.
No, it's 160,000 miles plus, it's got a motor problem, and it costs probably 12,000 to fix it properly. We've been able to push it through, but it's not going to last forever.
So, the first three vehicles for the sheriff's department were the 208,000, and that included all of the lights and equipment, et cetera, right?
That's how the sheriff billions are...
Right, so that's an all-in cost for the first four vehicles, the 208,000, and the animal control vehicle is black this time. I get black?
I believe it is, yes.
Yeah, that's different, so, okay, cool. All right.
So, my only point was, I think, at some point, we should focus on getting plug-in hybrids, but not for the sheriff, not for trucks. So, I was looking to see if we were replacing any cars for senior services or something like that, and it looks like we're not.
Well, we, the senior services bought a car off the auction this year, so they bought an existing vehicle that was already in the motor pool, if I recall.
Yes.
And was then we auctioned off their old vehicle.
Right, so this year, we're not, that's fine. That's what I was just trying to double check.
Keeping with Doug's request, do we want to go through each one, and if we're, if the consensus is all thumbs down, then we take it off the list? So, can we go up to the top and just start that over?
I think it's, I think it's fair too, you know you're committed in the hall, you're not making decisions, I know the public is watching, you think you're committed, but it's okay if you say yes now, you get to the bottom of the list, go, okay, we have to rethink this. It's difficult, I've been in your seat, I've been an elected official.
You've been.
But you have the authority to change your mind, and it's because it was proven to do so. So, I just say, we just need a little patience, thumbs up, thumbs down, can narrow this list down.
But you don't have that yet, so that's what I'm suggesting, if we go back and do thumbs up and thumbs down, as Kathy mentioned.
This particular motor pool fund pays for this outright, it pays the cash, it's outright, but it comes back to the general fund. These departments pay a rental fee on every one of them, so that general fund budget, more or less, you're funding the depreciation, put the money back over time. That is a good move on your end's part.
Thank you.
But those, those costs are baked into the budget already, that's what we did when we raised all that rate last year, so whatever we're spending on the motor pool is not really a, an additional expenditure.
And then, I did this, I inherited that same program when I became city major '91, and it's been brilliant. Every piece of rolling stock, you name it, if it rolled and had a wheel on it, the city garage fund owned all of it, and it's all ready to back, so this is brilliant, so don't chase that.
Okay.
I can't take credit for it, it was in place, I inherited this as well, but I fought hard to force you to continue this process, because it hasn't worked so well for us.
It's a good move, unfortunately, the cash is in place to pay for this, and then get it back over a period of time of depreciation, so it's a good move. So...
Back to time, let's break.
Instead of, unless you want to go line by line, do you agree with this recommendation for vehicles to be purchased?
We gotta go to the top, though.
Yeah, we should start at the top, just like...
Patrol cars?
No.
No.
Veterans affairs.
Veterans.
I mean, yeah.
Or still.
Excuse me?
The very top of the list.
Veteran's affairs, those never...
Veteran affairs?
Yep.
You actually want us to do this?
Soldiers and sailors we leave?
Yes.
Yes.
Veteran burials?
Yes.
We'll pass those aside as a...
Right.
Travis area, Dibs District, Cawton Library.
Yes.
Yes.
So, we know we're going to bring that one back at a later date, we can make a decision at that point.
Sutton's Bay, right.
Okay, patrol cars?
Yes.
Yes.
You know, transport vehicle?
Yes.
Animal control truck?
Yes.
Yes.
Chevrolet Silverado, which is used for plowing?
Absolutely, yes.
Oh, darn, I was hoping to walk through, you know, we could come to work because we could be the end part.
There's no, there are no snow days here.
Toyota Tacoma or Chevy 1500, which is what the drain commissioner will be using.
Yes.
Yes. Because we don't have any other vehicle.
The other trucks are wrecked.
I don't understand the third, the estimated, the estimated cost of 37.5 for a truck.
I can tell you, I went to the building safety purchases that you approved this year, they got two Tacomas, remember when we had the special meeting, they were 37.5 each. I just plugged it in there so you'd have an idea, if we went to a lesser vehicle, you don't need a Chevy Silverado 2500 for the drain commissioner, that's, you know?
Right, right.
And I just picked, what have we purchased lately? It's a truck, because he's going into five years around here, I'm sure, but I just picked a number. It might be higher, it might be lower, it could be, it could be a Subaru, I don't know.
What are the hours for the drain commissioner? That's a part-time position.
The drain commissioner is an elected official who sets his own hours. Am I correct?
Yes.
But do we need a designated car for a person, I think Steve told us he worked 15 hours a week or so.
And will it be housed in the soil, in the conservation district office still?
I'm sorry, say it again?
When Steve goes out of office, will it be housed in the conservation district?
The conservation district office was generously allowing the drain commissioner to work there because he served two positions.
Yeah, I know that.
By law, he has to have space in this office.
We have that space, okay.
Outside, outside of the district?
Yeah. Outside of the district, we have that space, it'll be in the utilization department, they have an empty desk, that, that could replace him. We'll have to get the computer, he won't be responsible for buying a computer or whatever he needs, and I think a more of a laptop, so he can use it, for example.
So, to follow up on Chairman Wessels' thought, if it's a part-time position, is there a possibility to share this vehicle somehow, or?
I guess one thing I'd say, knowing, yeah, knowing that, because I've been involved
with that position a little bit lately, I mean, you never know when the day you need it, when the inspection needs to happen, when the thing needs to go, so, and in order for that office to be responsive to the citizens, I think it's really difficult for that, I mean, I'm like, I liken it, because I like, I like to save the money, but I don't, I don't know that you can schedule via schedule, I don't know who the other side it would be, but it would be very hard, I think, for the official to, to schedule that.
Are they told they can only use it for drain commissioner business? Or do they use this as their personal vehicle?
And remember, you're talking about an elected official.
Right.
Right.
Isn't, hang on, if a person...
Do what they want.
You can't dictate hours, you can't assume, they're 24/7.
As far as a vehicle goes, if it's used for private use at all, that becomes taxable, correct? So, those miles would have to be accounted for.
Documented.
Yes, maybe with a pocket. But, but by obvious reasoning, the vehicle should not be used for private use, period. This, that same question I've asked the, the network northwest, do they have a boat, every employee has a vehicle, and they're allowed to use it for private use, and they're supposed to claim personal miles for taxation, so we've asked for those numbers, and we never get those numbers. So, that, that's an IRS violation, so we don't want to get into any of that at all. If there, if there, if there's no, Steve should have an estimate, we should have an estimate of how many miles Steve puts on a year. My guess is, the new drain commissioner is going to put on approximately those very same amount of miles, and it's not going to, that vehicle, we start brand-new on that vehicle, it should last 10 years, 15 years, maybe.
I can get the number of miles that the drain commissioner has put on the last five years, it's, it's not that much, he leaves the vehicle here, he drives here in his personal car and takes it. I can't speak for your new drain commissioner, because it's a new elected official, so.
But I think we can set policy, we can, we can tell them it's, that it's not a take-home vehicle, right? That's up to us, so we can have it be a not-take-home vehicle.
He's an elected official, he can take it home.
No, we cannot, that's up to us, just like, we, just like the sheriff's department.
What are you going to do if he does? Recall it?
Well, it's a county vehicle.
I realize that.
But sometimes, it's just a total waste of time to come all the way here. Let's say it's South Far Lake, and they live in Empire.
Seems like we're very much off topic here.
To drive here to get the truck is nuts.
Well, yeah, it's up to us.
Okay, we're buying it, yeah, and then we're going to trust their discretion.
Well, that's something that administration and the drain commissioner will have to work through at that time, whether they like it or not.
They will trust, we will trust their discretion.
Okay, so let's move on to the next one.
We'll back up, though, I want to back up a little bit further, because there's also a request for, for an assistant to the drain commissioner.
We'll, we'll get down that, until we get down to the bottom, that's all we're...
Well, I was going, okay, I'm more concerned about housing and office space. We have a two people on one.
Okay, I'm awake now, thank you.
All right. So, so we have, we have six cars that will be included within the budget, and also, ladies, come up with some numbers as it relates to depreciation and all that, we go along with that. Okay, the next one is the law enforcement and EMS equipment that's being recommended. First one there is the body cameras, the sheriff's here, so I can explain all this. And then, of course, there's, once you purchase it, it also includes the first year subscription fees, and the second item is, is what would cost over a support, additional four years of subscription fees. Next item down on the bottom is a dispatch council for replacement of glory in the dispatch room.
What, you want to do body cams?
Huh?
Are you going to go, are you going to?
I'm just going through this whole list here first, and then we can come back and continue with the vision. There's some carpet tiles in the 911 hallway and two offices that need to be replaced, that need to be replaced, and then, ten emergency operations center, flip-by tables. The bottom two are not the big-ticket items, and what we have in here, as you'll see on here, we, we are going to be requesting of this board that we be allowed to present a 2% grant, apply for a 2% grant with the, with the tribe for both of these items, both the dispatch council, and the body cameras, and all, and the first year subscription fee. So, that'll be on your agenda next week, allowing us to prepare a grant application for that, so hopefully you will approve that. I've been over there looking at the console, and it is set up in probably the, in a method that's probably not as conducive for assistance, so, but it's, it's a recommendation that not only comes from the dispatch, but it also comes as one of the high items that the planning commissioner has recommended should be undertaken, it's been one of the high priorities on the Northwest River in years. So, with that, I'm trying to take these as categories, and so, I don't get myself wrapped up, so. Linda, you have a question?
Did you want to, well, I...
We're just starting with the body cameras.
All right, so, so for the body cams, it's 2% grant possibility, but it wouldn't cover the project entirely, correctly, correct?
It'll cover everything from the purchase of the cameras and the first year of the maintenance fee. I'm going to have the undershare come up and explain.
What page?
Page 42. So, um...
You'll have to get a refresher cup of coffee.
Up to 16,000, right?
So, tell us about this, do you have body cameras?
We do, so ones that are upwards of 10 years old, and they're, well, we run three different platforms now, and you can't get, this is an original one, probably 10 years old, and originally, they were $500 a piece, and we would just purchase them out of our budget, and everybody had one. We were ahead of the curve. Now, as everybody's well aware, they're a standard, you pretty much can't do the job without it, and that's expectation of the public. These have worn out over time, they went to a second variation, which dropped to about $600, $700 a camera. Now, we're into the third iteration, which involves a lot more with IT, because these were simply, I pulled this off, I could plug this into the computer, and I could drop the video into the computer. Now, it's all internet-based and everything else. The second part of this is videos you have in the redaction when it comes to FOIA, public release of the information. Yeah, I'm sorry. So, I go to your house for a complaint, I'm in your house, that's not public information that can be released. We have zero capabilities to efficiently redact this software to comply with FOIA, so this kind of works in conjunction, the redaction software comes with this proposal. There's a traffic stop, and I run your name in the computer, the information that comes back is not subject to public release, there are lots of catches when it comes to FOIA. We do not have a full, up-to-speed system where we can redact these videos, so the vast majority of your videos are not released. To this point, we haven't run into issues with FOIA, but it's only a matter of time. Is there some software on campus that can do it? Yes, but a simple video is probably four to six hours to do 12-minute interaction, because you have to go frame by frame, and I can't just put a bubble over my face, because every time I move, and I have to go to the next frame and move the bubble, or the new redaction software will. This, too, has been on the CIP for, I believe, three years, and it's been a number-one priority, and we have kind of pushed it and not asked, but to the point now, it actually doesn't make sense to, because now we're into the fourth version, we have four different versions of these cameras on all our employees, four different ways they connect, four different ways to download, four different descriptions on how the new employee may use it, depending on which camera we give them, it's, it's a lot. This new system, obviously, this, the way it's proposed is for the first year, it can be paid in full, too. If a camera breaks, they will drop ship us a new one, three years in, they replace all the cameras and use brand-new ones. So, at the end of the five years, we're sitting on two-year-old cameras, at which point you can obviously agree up, I'm sure that's what they're looking for, but obviously, it puts everybody back on the same platform, gets us up to standard with FOIA and public information releases, and we're at the point we pretty much can't go without it, since it's become standard.
So, we're helping, silly, I'm not tracking, you've got down here only 71,000 of a $220,000 project.
In theory, you can go, you can pay it 71,000 this year, and like I said, service subscription fee of 36,000, or you can pay it all upfront, which can actually reduce the cost if you pay it upfront, I can't remember.
I didn't read that part. So, so this is, well, you've got, okay, you've got four two cameras purchased, and upfront one year's video subscription of 71.
Right, and I was, my narrative, my narrative kind of has the whole, the whole thing in, I don't know if that's part of the, I have to back later.
It's in...
What page?
Page 42.
It's 13 to 83, or what?
Go to page 41.
Obviously, our even banners seem like a lot, that's our employee, you don't have...
I'm not, yeah, no, I'm, I'm not questioning the need for, for the body cameras, and I'm not questioning the number that you're going to, I just want to make sure I can see how much in total, and how much NMRMA might be willing to take, I'm not understanding what 16,400 is either, so that's not very much of a $220,000 project. So that's not very much of a $220,000 project.
What page are you on?
Forty-one, forty-one, forty-two.
Which forty-one in the back?
Supplemental.
In the thing back for your book, there's a section of supplemental information. These are the narratives that are going to work for you, so that you're allowed to be official for your department post to be part of the budget process.
So forty-one.
On MMRMA, and even since this narrative was written and turned in, and MMRMA has changed the, what you can do after that process.
Yep.
They don't issue it like they used to. Now, they still, I'm sure, recover a small portion.
As small as sixteen-four of it?
Well, at the time this was written, it was $400 per unit, so forty-two times fourteen probably is sixteen-four.
Sixteen-four, okay.
Can I ask a really naive question?
I don't know if there is one. It's going to add.
So you need forty-two of these?
Yes.
Because forty-two officers are working at once?
It's, no.
Or just, it's personal equipment that they have?
The way they're set up and personalized, like you turn it on, it has the deputy's name.
Okay, okay. I just, thank you for that clarification.
Even would cover marine deputies and so on.
And you're gonna bring back the 2%, I think everybody agrees to that.
Well, we did apply, but we're gonna, our recommendation is that we will include it in the budget. If we can get the 2% or a portion of it, that's great, you know, so we still need to do it.
We don't have a choice, right?
I don't think you do.
And it's unfortunate, one thing I'll have to remember is we have a jail contract. And although some would disagree that it shouldn't, they usually hold that dearly cross against us when it comes to it. They put that out there as 2% money, so.
So I have a question. Now, we're talking about capital budget, and then we're talking about a yearly subscription fee. One of those is an operating fee, one of them is a capital outlay. Right? So would the, I mean, the purchase of the cameras would be a capital outlay? The subscription fee would be coming out of the operational budget?
Your purchase would be capitalized under the sheriff's budget. We probably would put some of it to the sheriff's budget, some to the jail. We would allocate the capital outlay.
Yeah, you broke it.
To each department, and then put it off as a appreciable asset?
But a subscription fee is not an appreciable asset.
That would become part of your contractual renewal, your contractual zero-one in every budget?
So I think his question is, is that when it comes to how it's gonna show up in our next year's budget, the subscription fee is gonna be out of the sheriff's budget. That's not a part of the capital outlay.
That's exactly, that's my point. I mean, we're discussing capital projects, and we're asking, we're talking amounts, some of which are capital and some of which are operational.
Right.
Still, if you're making a decision to buy something that has a subscription fee to it as well, you need to know both numbers. Because you're gonna impact the general fund. And this is, you know, if capital outlay is too broad of a topic for the header on this page, it's like, these are new things. This is not typical operational pens and pencils and pallets of paper. So if the capital outlay is where we're getting hung up, I would say, I'd just refuse.
And the point is not to criticize, humbly plagiarize a thing. It's just to understand clearly, okay, because we're gonna have to get to the sheriff's budget at some point. And that thirty-six recurring really is a sheriff's budget question, not a capital outlay question. I'm just trying to make that clear, and I think I understand that correctly, so.
So the two-twenty includes a five years of subscription?
Correct.
Correct.
All the service replaced, replaced at N to three, hundred percent replacement if broken, three or four replacement for every camera.
Thirty-six grand times five plus a seventy-one gets you the year two-twenty.
Two-twenty, that's right, okay. And hopefully sixteen-four from MMRMA. They've been very good.
In the past, they, the sheriff said they have changed their method, whether that'll be that amount or something better.
I leave out the go higher, which would lead to me to my question. If we do look at 2% possibility, what is the ask? Capital outlay of the cameras, full. Capital outlay of the cameras minus what MMRMA may give. Capital outlay of the cameras plus first operational years, the whole five year, and you know. Where would you want?
Well, the most definite number would be the recurring fees, because the other number, there's nowhere to define until MMRMA said what they were giving, right?
I would, we'll have to work that out, but I would go in for the whole thing for the first year. Buy all the cameras.
Agree.
And buy and get the first year operational costs, you know, these facts. That's me.
For the grant?
For the grant. If they say no, or they want to break it out, we know, you tell it out, here's what it is. They say, hey, we'll fund this part, but we're not gonna fund this part. They can make that decision, so. It's insane. Hopefully, they'll fund a hundred percent. Maybe they'll only fund a certain portion of it. That's when we go back to MMRMA after the first year, take it from there.
Haven't we had a conversation with MMRMA about what the grant process looks like? Can we have that conversation in the next?
From my knowledge, I think we've given direction on the process.
Last we met with them, it was suspended. As they regroup.
So it may not happen.
Sounds like a big if, though, that we need to figure out before we make the decision.
And then my question is, the forty-two item cameras, with or without grant possibility and census?
It has to be.
Are we gonna do it regardless of the outcome of grant requests, or are we gonna hinge this on grant?
You gotta do it regardless. It saves a lot of money in lawsuits, so protects the officer, protects the citizen. There's, you know.
Officer complaints is what?
Yes, and everybody knows you're wearing a body camera, so they behave a little bit better at a traffic stop. And I'd like to compliment you on your narrative, okay?
Did you also hint that there was less logistics time for the person that's creating the FOIAs or, because of the enhancement? I mean, so it should be a money-saving somewhere down there?
There is, I mean, there is software involved. I mean, not only will this help us, this will assist the prosecutor's office. With the release of this information, what ask?
I apologize for not having it, but you've looked at other options, right? I assume you, there's just one vendor that does this, and you've looked at other?
We have looked at other vendors. The reason we chose and went this way is because it is compatible with our current in-house software that we use for jail dispatch and law enforcement.
Okay.
Well, I'm in for it either way, but I hope we get it through the grant.
Yes, yes.
It just seems like we have a lot of unanswered questions. I guess that-
But by the time we get to the answers, you know, let's say we don't adopt the budget until December. You know, once again, once you adopt the budget, it doesn't mean you're gonna spend everything. Once you adopt it, okay, let's say we get the award of the grant at the end of the year, or at the end of November. Well, we're not gonna run through here and change anything. That's mean you're not gonna spend that money. That's all it is. That's what you had planned to spend if you didn't get the grant.
I guess you just gotta decide if you need cameras or not, and it doesn't sound like we have a choice on that. I think that just comes down to need cameras, I guess.
And I think the other variable here in this, we do discuss later in another committee, is do you want to pay the whole thing upfront? Or they're giving you an estimate of the upfront for twenty-five, with recurring to a six percent for the maintenance contract? Do you have those options if it's a cash flow issue or a budget concern for twenty-five? You've got that latitude, which the other sheriff has outlined.
And a possible discount to use that too.
Discount, discount if it's paid upfront.
I'd like to know that.
Yeah, it's a discount.
I thought it was, but I don't, I haven't looked at the actual, what time you have.
If there's no discount, there's definitely no emphasis to pay ahead, and I'd rather pay with tomorrow's inflated dollars than today's. Now, it's just really silly to pay that upfront and-
We'll investigate that when you're back. Thank you. Okay. Dispatch console, again, that's another item that we will, we're gonna request that you apply for a 2% grant. That we could replace the console. The idea is to move it more into the middle of the room. If you get over that, the middle of the rooms, they have four sections to go around. That way, there are some prices that you need more folks at, at the console that, you know, you have room to place them on. So this covers all the equipment that you have to do that. So again, we'll apply for it before the grant.
I think we're at page eighty-four in your narrative handbook, or the document, if you want to read more details about it.
I remember this from the last budget discussion, and you probably can't speak to that. We don't have our, it seems like, what's that? Console?
I know too, but what was it saying?
I mean, I guess my-
The CIP.
Yeah.
I know that's been on the CIP. Those were originals in the building in '05. Obviously, dispatcher sits in those consoles for twenty-four, seven, three, sixty-five. And I know as things have changed, they've added screens, they've added more computers, because technology has changed. The sizing has gotten smaller, the way out of the room. It was ideal for 2005, it's not for 2025. And desks and furniture, especially thinking about nature, that are all digital and electronic based, get tired and wear out. So I'm gonna have to look into this operating system and bring it into this decade.
So I have a question. The treasurer's sitting here, and so we're looking through these, and the last time we did this, we had this discussion, and sometimes maybe we wouldn't think about capital, about general fund things, and maybe it's a DTR funding option for some of these things. And so I don't know what our current status of that is.
One of the main reasons we're not talking about DTR, you have gotten, you have a number of commitments of DTR funds already made. One is to finish broadband, you've got heat pump replacements.
I'm aware of the list. I'm aware of the list. I'm just asking if there's sufficient.
This is what you made up last year.
Correct. But that doesn't tell me if there's additional funds available. It just tells me that list, so.
We can talk about that if you want. I'm looking at through there that I understand that you have made a lot of commitments of using the yard guys.
Already, yeah.
I would be apprehensive to say that they're more unavailable at this time. I would try to do like a general fund, but that acquisition, preserve, reserve for capital acquisitions.
So you do see some items down this list that actually might be, but you're still saying that you don't want to attack the DTR fund, so you see nothing in the DTR fund or no leeway? I mean, it's kind of hard to make these decisions without understanding the big bucket you're working with. I mean, that's, yeah.
The big bucket's getting the grant.
Okay.
We got about three million in cash.
Probably wouldn't hurt. Should we get the treasurer up here so he can record?
Sure.
So, as the minister said, we do have quite an hefty list already, time to DTR. I've got 3.3 in cash that I'd like to reserve for settlement. We've got about a million receivables, a little over that. I don't expect to get that in for settlement. We're gonna have period which next year. Outside of that, I've got a money market account that has 2.2. Of that, most of it's already allocated. So to go beyond that, I would highlight what you're requesting and then work with Kathy to see if, in fact, we do have enough available for the settlement coming in March and these additional requests. At this time, no, I don't feel comfortable saying that, yes, take that from DTR.
Okay, and so that applies even to your suggestion about the facade thing. You mentioned something that was more likely. You said it's just more fitting. You still don't have the money.
It would be more fitting. I would like to see that we have money. For example, our interest earnings for the year have been substantially higher than the disquieted. So we've already collected over 300 in interest earnings, just on liquid cash and our investments. So when we do a budget move for those items, I would like to see those funds be utilized in that area. Does that make sense?
You've already identified the facade to be a general fund, which you've seen in your twenty-four leftovers, up to 150,000. We don't know what those disquieted are for about two weeks. Because we felt with the $500,000 contingency fund already baked into your twenty-four budget, that would cover these general fund contingencies, it's can be done there. It's when it gets, we know the blockway's gonna be probably double than what we've kind of talked about already. So, I agree with Jan, the twenty-four items, we kind of go around the general fund, honey. Your DTR has the commitment of the remainder of broadband. The heat pumps as needed, so we don't flush out the money from DTR, we just take it as we need it. But these heat pump replacements, while we're on your twenty-five list, Richard will get to it, it's a point twelve.
So I guess, which is fine. That answers the question. I don't need that length. It's just, you have the money or you don't. That's a pretty simple answer I was looking for. But then the next question begs, is okay, if I approve everything on the list that you have listed on the general fund, you have the money there?
It depends on when you execute it.
Yeah, okay.
It is gonna come down to cash flow. If we execute late, some of these twenty-four projects, and carrying in the twenty-five, it's gonna create kind of a cash restriction coming into the summer, before we get our collections in. We are right now maintaining a positive cash balance, but that is intentional, because we are utilizing as much as we can on the investment side.
So back to your fun question, if we were to approve the budget you presented here, just, what is the, I mean, what is the amount we're working with to say, okay, we're gonna do these things? I mean, somewhere there's gotta be some math done.
That's why we're going through this today. That's why we're not going through the entire general fund.
Right.
Because in your budget here, we haven't included all these capital projects yet, so we need to include it, but we don't know what is a interest and who are not interested. So, you know, so that's why we're gonna get into the goal. Like I'm saying, we're not making all these decisions today. You're gonna have more information. We're trying to get, we're trying to get point A before I can get to point B.
I think, I think the frustration comes from, we're gonna want to say yes to everything, because we don't have anything relative, or we don't have, we don't have the big picture in our, is that what I'm kind of getting?
Yeah, it's the same thing. I mean, it's like, we're working on a budget that has, I mean, actually, it's not even a budget discussion. It's just a, do we like the stuff discussion?
We like it all.
All right, I'm gonna back up here for a moment. Kathy and I are following the same process you went through last year. This is the same process you went through.
And I had the same frustrations as that.
And I, and I, as your administrator, was not, I didn't like, it was my charge to come in here and all of a sudden change your entire process. I mean, that would have been more to your permanent administrator and your permanent finance director. I would have preferred to have seen everything on there in one line and be done with it, and you can take that what you want. I did not come into this to change the county's processes, which have been going for years, not just last year, years.
Well, usually, we start from the beginning. Generally, we go through, in the past, we've gone through revenues first. And then funds first, and got a better understanding of where we were. We're kind of starting with the wish list first this year.
At least what I heard from the chair, that there's someone, they wanted to see the wish list. So if you want to blame anybody for causing your-
There's no blame. There's no blame.
Blame it on anybody.
I'm just trying to get through here.
There's multiple ways.
But we'll work, I'll just back to you. When we get to the general fund, I hope to have some very solid numbers. Very solid numbers, you do X, you do Y. When you get like down here to the parts and records, there's a lot of this stuff down there. I'm not ready to tell you to do it.
That's right.
I'm not gonna tell you to do them until you get a master plan done, and then you get them in your budget any time you want. But, you know, these are the things that was given to us to provide to you. So bear with us, I told you it was gonna be messy, it's like breaking sausages, but when we get done, it'll be okay.
We can get this done in like five minutes. We just say, yes, everything, and wait to see how much money we have, and then we'll say no to the stuff we have to say no to.
No doubt.
So, Jan, I need a little clarification.
Sure.
So you said we have 3.3 million in cash. But you'll be paying some of that out?
But you'll be paying some of that out in April?
That is the running balance for the DTR to operate, is roughly what the previous year's settlement was.
Settlement?
Is the amount that I spend on the liquid taxes in March.
So money that we have to send to the state, whether we've gotten it or not?
To the local.
To the local.
To the local township. And then we hope, and then, but we don't know how much of that we're gonna get.
We don't.
Able to collect.
I collect it throughout the year.
Right.
And as of right now, for last year, we had, say, roughly three million dollars worth of the liquid taxes. I've collected almost two million dollars of that in the last six months. So, we are collecting it, and we're working through that, but I'm saying is, I currently have a million dollars of receivable, but I don't expect to come in before March to bring my cash up anymore. I'll bring in some of that, probably two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, maybe half, depending on how people are doing with their accounting and cash flow. The rest of it's gonna be carried forward to the next year.
Yeah, so you need that.
You need to reserve.
So is the liquid tax revolving fund? Because it's.
It's revolving.
It's self-funded, and that's how I'd like to keep it.
Yeah.
You gotta have a reserve.
So the two point two in money market?
That's earmarked for all the active projects that we have to list.
So it's really two point two plus three hundred thousand interest that we have for projects? But we wanna keep some of that, don't we?
I would prefer to.
We don't wanna strip it out.
Don't wanna bankrupt.
And you do have a reserve policy, it's your board policy, and it's on your administrator's page, the website, if you'd like a copy of the reserve policy, I think we need now to.
I brought it before you guys, we're teaming this thing as a reserve for that.
What percentage do we say we want?
We have a language that reads something to the fact that the liquid tax revolving fund shall maintain two and a half, two and a half times rolling average settlement in the checking for its operations.
Rolling average?
Two and a half times the settlement's rolling average. So you take the average of the last three years of the settlement, multiply that by two and a half times, that's what the reserve policy is intended to be.
For the DTR?
Just for DTR. So what would that be? Just to grab a number, what might that be?
Six and a half.
Just about.
So we're drawing it down below the reserve policy, and we're doing that as a group, trying to be transparent, so let you know that you're squeezing stone now, so there's not gonna be much left.
Simple question, simple answer, thank you, there's no more to get out of there, so that's all, that's all the answers.
We do have the benefit, John, of not having very many forfeitures. We do, we do, and that has in turn lowered our revenue, because we're not taking as much debt and interest and fees and so on, so.
But that million one that we have just released back, that helps?
Do we just spend that?
Yes.
Thank you.
As far as forfeitures go, that can slip pretty quick, we, yeah, we've seen that in the past.
Two thousand and eight.
With a big property of high value.
Level first.
Yep, they did.
Oh, I get just the.
Then it might.
A bunch of small ones.
Gotcha.
Increase the, you know, the liquidities by one, two percent is significant. We'll be up four, five million dollars to pay out all the schools, all of the tax jurisdictions. So, yeah, it's important we need to have high level confidence with the DTR, and that we're gonna use it for self-funding first. All right.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
It just reminds me, it takes more than one time to do something to get it, so thank you so much.
Thanks, John.
The second time around, it makes so much more sense.
Yes. I'll be in the back any minute. How to stay up here, we probably will. As we go down through here, the dispatch console, you've heard about that, and reveal your, give the money to them, allows to process a grant, a grant request. The other two items.
Do we have a consensus on the console? Was there a consensus on the console? I don't remember, like, you hear any on that, or was there?
You know, they've been asking that for. A good year.
And that's probably one of the, one of your essential critical elements of operations in a candidate nine-one-one center, and those folks have to, if they're gonna get everybody out, that counts, our departments, police agencies, you name it, nine-one-one.
I'm for it, I just don't remember hearing anyone say, we got into a whole other discussion and never got around to.
So, so what is the one thirty-seven, one hundred and thirty-seven thousand? That's a capital project fund.
Are you in the narrative?
Yeah.
Okay, when I read the director's narrative on that, I realized that he thought that it would be paid for out of the.
Dispatch.
And so, it's a capital event.
Oh, okay, that's why.
It's a confusion, he's taking one hundred and thirty-seven thousand, and it'd be something through dispatch.
Okay.
And it's not, it's your project, it'll be four seventy of that. You have to, they don't have enough money to do a capital outlay on their own, they just need your money to operate, which is now over a million a year from the general fund to dispatch just to operate. A capital budget project like this will come out of the general fund.
So I would say, this is, right now, we're operating over there. It may not be ideal, it may not be perfect, but it is operating, and it's operating safely, we say that, okay? We, I would do a tentative on this, I hate like you, I hate to kick it down the road one more time, if we can afford to do it at the end, at the end here, I think we should do it, I'm all for the efficiency over there, but, you know, maybe, you know.
Let's do it if we can afford it.
Yeah, set aside pile and come back to it, or?
When we have requests from departments or elected officials for capital projects, is there ever an opportunity to share the cost with the department? Is there some money in nine-one-one?
There is not, you're supplementing the operation of nine-one-one by over a million dollars.
I understand that, but are they spending all we allocated this year? Or is there some flexibility in their balance to share some of the cost of this? I see Michelle shaking her head, no.
Because we would only be supplementing them to cover their budgeted expenses for twenty-four, and this is not budgeted, so what we're supplementing now is to our.
I must have not asked the question right, I'm, many departments don't spend all their money.
They overspend.
What?
I said, but they basically overspent, so we're supplementing, is that again?
Look, so is there any money left in that department at the end of the year?
They have no money.
They have no money.
I'll try to ask my question better.
But I knew where you were going, is that at the end of the year, you're gonna be close to zero, if they have any leftovers because whatever. But that means that the next year, instead of giving one million or whatever we have, we may give it a little less to get it to zero, it's gonna year to year, what coverage their operation could be.
I wanna go over there and look at that, because these guys are saving lives. You should, yeah, every day. Yeah, these guys are saving lives, I wanna see, because I also don't think we need to be able to consider this if we have the money. I think we leave it on the list and then see.
We're still alive through the five for the two percent grant.
We're not doing it.
You know, taking the things off the list, and also we get the grant, okay, and that's one hundred and thirty, they have to spend out the budget.
There is an opportunity, budget for what you do know, you don't budget for what you don't know. And we have towers that have space, and towers are what generate revenue to operate nine-one-one. So if we have towers with space, and we get device contracts, and we implement those contracts, and revenue starts coming in, that will help to alleviate this drain out of the general fund. So, that is your only revenue stream, your nine-one-one, and then the surcharge on your phones and state money.
Well, I didn't see anybody say no, but I saw Melinda said she might give on it, and Doug reminded me that we haven't eliminated anything.
The other two items as relates to carpet tiles and rooftop tables, you know, if during the year something comes up, we can do up the debt, or something changes, I'm not saying that's a high priority, either one of those. So, you know, if that was gonna be, and argue otherwise, that's fine, but it's, we'll leave it in there.
Matt is here right now.
Matt, do you wanna talk about the dispatch console and come on up? I've tried to convince him that it's needed, so I think I've got most of it.
It's a little different to have a support for this kind of project. What are the questions? So the consoles, they, they're the same that have been in place since the building was constructed back in two thousand and six, or two thousand and four. They're not functioning as they should at this time, some of the functionality is missing, we've been trying to piece them back together, maybe it's getting different controls to work. A lot of the heating and air movement elements of them are no longer in place, we have to look at other, other ways to accommodate those for the dispatchers. And the carpet is pretty bad, you know, in two thousand and four. So we did try to coordinate this with maintenance, that became pretty complicated, so finding a vendor to do this work on one else was advantageous for us. And putting it in the capital improvement plan and the budget narrative for past couple of years, and I think that if the board is willing, we can look forward to that.
So did you just say that you want, that it's best to do the carpeting while you do the consoles?
Yeah, if we're gonna tear off the consoles, it's the best time to replace the carpet.
Yeah, I get that.
Right.
So where are your consoles in the meantime?
What we would do is, we would temporarily put them in place in the ELC, so that we can continue operations down there. We would be able to move our, utilize our computers, our radios, and the telephones down in the ELC, or during the work.
In that training room down there?
Yep.
That can be easily done?
Yeah, we have elements in place to where we can set up the consoles down there, set up computers one at a time, have them take over operations down there.
Okay.
Well, I don't see that we have a choice.
No.
No, and you've been asking for this for a couple of years.
Yeah, it's been a few years I put it in place, and I understand the board's position, you know, you have a lot of decisions to make.
So.
I've been trying to, you know, be accommodating to that for you, but if it's at all possible, what do you?
What we need is a revenue stream, which is the tower, so where are you on?
Money command.
Yeah, I mean, that's some vendors.
Right.
Well, T-Mobile is, as I've put before the board, they're putting equipment on two of our towers. Verizon is renewing contracts at the Maple City site, and working toward an agreement on the new tower that hopefully will be built in Lelandon Township. AT&amp;T will be renegotiating their contracts on three different tower sites here in the near future, so I'm spending a lot of time looking at legal documents and trying to get those created for them.
What's the status of, there's a tower that was approved in Suns Bay, just a mile and a quarter from this tower, what's the status of that?
That, I've just also learned that that special request has not been signed off by the implant directly yet, because I haven't met all the conditions.
So you made a pretty strong statement that it doesn't? Yeah, Suns Bay claim, but you made a pretty strong statement, I saw that showed it doesn't, I mean, there's another viable choice, like, right there.
I thought I provided a lot of information that would support their zoning to be able to.
They came to me before they went to the one that they went to for that location, I just said no.
No hopes for M twenty-two between Leland and Little Traverse, like, or two oh four?
It is a very delicate area right there, as far as coverage is concerned. The easiest way to attack that would be getting something from the west. Putting a tower on the management would be next to impossible, that would be the greatest solution.
Not gonna happen. It's not gonna.
Thanks. Don't, don't even start that. Don't even start that, no.
How tall is that lighthouse out there? Is that?
The crib?
No, not the crib.
No, not the crib.
Well, no, I assume it has a lighthouse outside.
There is a lighthouse.
South. Nineteen.
Four stories, maybe?
Twenty-seven.
It was, took longer to walk up than it did down.
True.
Not possible to put a repeater or something on the top of that, that might be.
You're gonna be dealing with the red tape of the National Park and federal government, it's.
Ten years, twenty years.
It is a black hole, I agree with you, that's a black hole, and by the.
The National Park is, or?
No, going down twenty-two, you know, you know the spot, to say, I'm gonna lose you, you need to go about three miles and.
It's four. Point two. I know this is another, this is another conversation. We need to get back.
While I got it, I have to ask.
No engineer.
Well, I could possibly save one more tower in the county, thank you for your work on this one, they need to continue to go on this tower here, and.
Our finance director has suggested we take a five-minute break.
Good idea.
So Matt, is that's.
But, Melinda, that's five minutes.
It wasn't me last time, Mr. Chair, it was.
We will, we will reconvene, we must be done by twelve-thirty today, the administrator says.
So get serious.
It will be, I have other things I have to work on.
I have payroll.
Yeah, yes. Yeah, I watch it.
Chairs.
The other two, I.
Oops, sorry.
Did you say?
So we're on chairs, I thought we went through those.
Okay, yeah, the other two items that's under that list, we'll deal with in another mat, mat, or overtime. Campus-wide chair replacement, as you know, this last year, the building safety department, you know, contracted chairs, the PMI had a price that was much, much more affordable than we had thought it was gonna be, so we decided, or Kathy and I made the decision, said, instead of trying to have each department go through this, let's just do a campus-wide request and get a number in your packet that you have. Lauren went out and got a price, got an estimated price from the vendor, that we purchased from these chairs, but then she also went out onto what is known as dimcoles, and it's through Staples, but Staples.
My, my deal.
My deal, I'm sorry, my deal, dimcoles, my deal, sorry, anyway, my deal, but Staples has gone out and has received a statewide contract for the purchase of these same chairs. And as we can see, the price for right now would be approximately thirteen thousand dollars less than if we went through our normal, our vendor. We're starting to use this Staples in the M deal, M I deal, with some other items such as buying pallets of paper, you know, that we generate, which is saving a chunk of money on those pallets. The question we have is, as you invite, we put a question mark in twenty-twenty-four, and I think Kathy mentioned that we have the funds available for twenty-twenty-four to purchase all these chairs now, at this price, instead of waiting for it to come out next year off on a M deal. This, Mr. Exro, this. Mr. Exro, this has been competitively bid.
Oh, that wasn't my question, just the funds that we have for this, where do those funds exist from?
Well, I also, we should caution, we would like to open those bids for the walkway and the facade as well. But if we are underspent in any other general fund, you know, this, the general fund hasn't been fully depleted. We should look at our budgetary status. But last year this time, we picked up the telephony recorders in the end of the fiscal year because we had unspent budgetary money available and we reallocated it. So it's possible, I'm just saying. We've done these things at the end of the year just because we realized we had unspent budgetary money.
So there may be money available, but I was, the other question, I remember this discussion because the previous time I saw these, they were $1,200 a chair, which is where I raised some questions about that. But going back to that, at that point of discussion, and some people, I remember, had bought some chairs in that discussion, like more recently. And so is this replacing every chair in the place or just the chairs that are older? Or is there any of these chairs that are?
We went through each department and asked the departments to make a request on how many chairs they'd need replaced. And all went into one spot in the chair, the seating in the chairs got rips in it and there's. So I mean, most of these chairs in this building have purchased, is down in here, I don't know when, how, when these were purchased, but out there, probably purchased at the time that the building was open.
Before 08, when this building was open. This is workforce only. This is not anything.
This is workforce only.
Workforce only.
That's an entire, that's one chair for every single workforce person.
Except for building safety because they went before you and got it in their budget and they went on their own.
Okay, I'm also going to guess the question I want to answer because I know, I know that there had been some individual purchases of chairs taking place over the last couple of years because I've seen it run through and there were discussions, so.
Well, that's what I was just going to say, there's been a couple, like special needs chairs, they had to purchase for different rates, but only a handful.
So what you're saying is if you have the money left, you've got a really good price and we should take advantage of it.
I agree.
Take advantage of it.
I would say that makes sense.
Sometime in October, maybe by November, we may be bringing this to you to say, okay, here's where we are, this surprises because you're going to have to make some decisions on the two main projects. But we just want to leave that option open to you that you've been thinking about it, especially when we already, we won't have to go through the process of actually bidding because we're utilizing the state's contract on this. But you're saying. Start using it, you need to utilize it for other means that we have here to start. Lauren has already run out to log into it and start finding some.
But you're saying through M-I-deal, or M-I-deal, it was cheaper than that or not? I mean.
This is. M-I-deal, and up here that through the same vendor that purchased the other chairs, it was costing approximately $56,258. Through an M-deal for the same chairs, $43,300.
Okay, because yeah, that, that comes out to 426 a chair if you, and the current estimated cost, so I would think that, you know.
So you said 46, not 54.
Yeah.
Forty-six, not 54, because 54 is written here.
Yeah, that was.
Well, I know, but we did it. That's what estimates that we did.
So change it to 46.
Put this together.
So this is 46 then?
Correct. Okay, we'll change the number. Thanks.
Okay, so we'll keep that one. Department projects, yeah, you have some here on the register of deeds and report. We don't have.
It's okay. These are projects that these two offices, you know, they maintain the historical records of the county. And so Jennifer Grant, with register of deeds, has been working on these books. She's building these historical books. She does appeal in here and is just working at the project.
Got my contract.
So she does work out of the 256 funds that she has in her special funds. I believe that we budgeted this in because she had the funds passed to do so, so this is just letting you know, this is not a whole project.
Yes.
Say yes.
So all of that is not an additional budget item from what we have in front of us already? Is that correct?
Well, the historical module software, it might not be a bad idea to, on a next meeting, have the register of deeds come in and explain it to you because I don't have the expertise to explain it and it might be interesting anyway. I really enjoy the presentations to tell you about the historical module software purchase upfront, purchase and installation, that $800 amount. I think, you know, this is also an opportunity for you to say, yeah, we'd like to see this department come forward or this elected official come forward and explain more about what they do.
So. I'll see if I can put that on the agenda. I'll talk to her and see if next week we can have her as we go through this first.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay. Buildings and ground projects, okay. The first one up there is built with the brain commissioner. Office spaces, I mentioned to you before, we have found a spot, you know, that's got an open desk in the utilization department. They agreed that it could be used there. So the only thing that we're going to have to come up with is a computer and a telephone there at that desk. So at that point, you know, that was, to be determined, we didn't know where that would be. So you can scratch out the whole thing called office space and furniture because we know where that is.
Okay.
That doesn't explain the assistant if we move forward with an assistant.
Excuse me?
If there's a request for an assistant, to the brain commissioner, where would we house the assistant?
I don't know. But we will find something because I'm also lucky to see if there's any individuals here that may have some extra time on their, I mean, I'm not saying anybody does, but to see if we could find some other way to come up with a, you know, if there's other things that can be done.
That could have been done.
Huh?
Douglas, that's where I'm going. We could have saved some office space in our basement when we get a remodel because that I beg this.
We were assured there was.
Well, that's, that's past history.
We were assured there was plenty of office space for future expansion, if I remember that discussion correctly. We seem to be running into roadblocks already, so.
Doesn't sound like it to me. Sounds like it's got to work.
It does sound like that. We don't have, it's ridiculous. So we're replacing our great commissioner, our utilization department, don't know where the assistant will go. We've already got, we're already crowded out with finance. We, it is an issue. It's an issue.
May I remind you that we saved $250,000 to $300,000 by having the health department?
Yeah, remind you though, we could have done that and had office space.
Well, I know.
I think, I think that's old history. We're varying.
Yeah.
I got to get you out of here.
Yeah.
You know. Office space furniture and reconfigure of our administration league with the finance department set up in there. We're looking at where we're going to put the space in there to put one more office. And we think we have a plan of, we're going to get some numbers to put together. It's not going to be rebuilding whole walls, but right now.
Is this finance you're talking about for finance?
It could either, either finance, it's probably where our finance individual will be.
HR too.
It could be HR. I don't know. We haven't figured all that out. But we know we're going to need one extra spot in there. And we can probably, we believe we can put up walls without going all the way, without doing major construction.
Just dividers.
Just a.
Just dividers.
Do we have divides of Lawrence space?
Excuse me?
Lawrence space?
Yes, in that area. So we're working on that, so we'll be getting those numbers together to bring back. Meanwhile, Kathy and I are going to start sharing an office in there next week, so we'll both be in that same office. We'll figure it out. I think we won't hurt each other too bad.
So why are you sharing it up?
Because you're out of office space.
Good luck with that.
We're out of office space.
Well, it's part of what the transition type footwork.
That's okay, I just like being right, so keep going.
Okay. Okay. The others here, I'm going to be honest with you, I don't, the only other one that I have on all of this through here, and buildings and ground and CIP, these have all been on the list for quite some time, I understand.
Right.
I don't know if any of these has a higher, is a dead hot priority except for the LEC gel humidifier replacement.
Right.
If you would pass that box around. Here's what is taking place on a regular base over there with the humidifier system. I know on your desk, I know we put a cost in there, it has over here $30,000. So we have the possibility of, we have a quote and I got Gary come up with a better explanation of why we need to think about rebuilding the humidifiers over there so we can stop that. That's honestly.
So we're going to be putting the right kind of water.
Calcium, the water stuff.
It's artwork.
That they have to go over there and constantly clean out on the regular.
Calcium? Oh my gosh.
Calcium, that's what's happening.
So we're going to get a different water.
Can we sell this for someone? Can we sell it? Like it's a by, it's a byproduct?
No, Gary wants it all back. So this is another one of those things that we're going to talk about moving forward sooner because we have a quote from. I hate it, but it's my brain goes, it's a senior boss, so deal with it. Colicant water that can change out the system there and is perhaps twice as what we have in your right there.
So this is.
The next group.
Is this calcium or is that built up detergent?
Spray calcium.
It is calcium, it's out of a water chink then?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, you've got to have a RO system, got to have RO water.
From what I was told, that when the law enforcement service built, they did not put in the commercial grade humidifiers. They just put in, and it's a lot more use over there than a commercial grade humidifier does. So it cannot, from what I understand, it cannot keep up with what's needed there. So that's the only high level thing.
Okay. So that one's okay.
Copy machines, we're going to go ahead and start the recycling where we replace copy machines on a more rotation basis.
Kathy, I'll let you get into that one more.
Yeah, that's usually handled out of the administrator's office. The executive system developed a inventory of all our copiers in the building. We're going to, you know, get that going again so it's not, oh my gosh, we've got six of them that are tanking at the same time. Well, methodically go through a rotation. So this is a guestimate. Copiers can be less than this, fur or very expensive if they're color, if they're needed in that department. So this is just a awareness number. It's not, I can't tell you if it's accurate. I just need to be aware that we would rather be on a rotation than an emergency replacement.
Got it.
So to back up, all you're saying with the, the CIPs, you're just putting those on the CIP? We're not budgeting those, correct?
I'm not planning on it at this point. I know they're important, but I don't know if we have the resources. You have to start pushing everything else. I haven't been given that they are what priority they are at this point.
Other than the humidification.
Humidification is the only one that's come to me and saying we need to do.
The tower and air handler. What are we seeing about the tower and the air handler? Is that hand in hand with the humidifier?
No.
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 No, from, yeah, from this, that's the cooling tower behind it. From discussions with Gary previous, he said, you know, you're going to have to do it someday, but it doesn't, it's not an emergency. That's my recollection from the last budget round on that.
I do, I'll draw your attention in your supplemental information section, page 234, where the cap delay request from the Buildings and Grounds regarding the store plant computer controls. It does have a high priority according to the narrative that was provided. And there's quite extensive overview with pictures. And then there's also the cooling tower narrative with some documentation. To the CIP process with some, perhaps some estimates in here.
What page was that?
234.
Thank you.
So I think, wouldn't that be a bad idea to just bring this group, Jerry?
Jerry's had a, he lived here, it's foreign, but there's been a debt in the family, so he's got this, so we'll bring it back out and have a update from these items.
So, oh, okay, that is the cooling tower and the air handler. Okay, I thought it was a different unit over there. That's the $30,000?
The humidifier, well, we have a budget here of $30,000, but we have a quote for $18,000.
No, for the, for the. For the government center cooling tower and air handler, it's $410,000.
It is $410,000.
And what he's saying then is that if that goes down, all 95 heat pumps lock out.
We'll have it back here.
So for my notes, is that a, just bring back?
Yes.
Well, priority, I would say.
Has to be.
Now we have a good paper.
Except I think I remember him saying it's a priority, but it's not an immediate need. I think that's what he told us when he talked to us before.
It's not until it goes down.
So it could perhaps be done next year.
His description from the last time was, you know, I'm not, I just remember not being like an emergency situation. I mean, that, you know, if you put a new one in and it goes down, all of your heat pumps lock out as well. I mean, this is.
He said it's leaking and it's undersized. But he didn't say it was an emergency. He did not say.
He did not. We went through that discussion.
Well, he's got top very, very high priority. So it sounds like he's thinking we might be at the end of.
End of its life.
That must have changed since last year.
Well, it's going to be.
What page are you on?
238.
This is page 238 for the cooling tower and air handler.
This is our quintessential.
I think it would be good for you to hear from Jerry and Perry on this. I, I understand when they talk to me about it, but to reiterate that you certainly would be having your responsibility. Okay, yeah, I think they need to get in here and play this to us. Very, very hard.
Good.
Other than that, he's.
So that's that. And then the gel humidifiers, is that where the calcium is coming from?
Right.
Gotcha, okay, and that $30,000, what are we doing with that?
I'm going to have it on your agenda next week to consider.
We might have money this year.
Yeah, but a quote that we have gotten is significantly less, about $18,000.
All right. And then copy machines, that's on a rotation, so it's just time. And we've got funds in the duplication. I'm going to check on the duplicate, I actually did come prepared to. If we have money in the duplicate and we don't have anything else, it's definite, yes. It's just that we have nothing budgeted for copiers this year. And I think that's probably not as smart. No. Okay. We should have had someone who, huh, must have got it here off the last year. Okay.
Under the Parks and Rec Commission projects, as you know, they are currently, you're currently going to a Parks and Rec, on your master plan. The only thing that the Parks and Rec has recommended or has requested is that both the Miles Kimbley discop course projects be submitted for a 2% grant. So that will be on your agenda next week to proceed with that one. Everything else to the top issues like the visible referred punishment. We've heard from our consultant that that, the visible does not meet any kind of guidelines for accessibility, grants, whatever, so. But everything else on here, I would recommend not doing anything until that master plan is complete. And back in your hands. It will be in your probably, in your, looking at it, probably sometime in January or it could be sometime, it's going to be sometime in January because it is consultant's desire to have this totally completed and into the hands of the state of Michigan by February 1st. And then again, we could talk about that you have, so you know now, when you look at the Parks and Rec budget, as you know, you already put $110,000 aside for future capital projects.
We doubled it to 55.
If you're getting out of that money or bringing anything into this is done. We're also, we have also put into the budget under the line of capital projects another $55,000 for next year. So there could be a potential of $100,000.
65.
About $65,000 that I would strongly encourage to try to use. About sixty five thousand dollars that I would strongly encourage to try to use it as matching, as matches for possible grants. And that's the one reason you get the master plan. What comes out is the high priority is waiting to, to receive. That's, it'll be in one of the Parks and Rec Commission, probably in January, maybe December at the latest, or earliest, maybe a little sooner. But it is a process that is being born through, which will not only help, you know, a block for grants, you know, to do the state, but there's other grants that you don't have to have a master plan for, but trying to get a priority of where everything's going to be fine a lot. That priority of what should come first, what should come second, instead of what I feel like is three parks competing against each other sometimes. So we'll continue that one. But as you also know, you have approved the facilities for recreation. Part of that position is time and dedication will be to the Parks and Rec Commission, so at least there is a dedicated staff person with some level of authority to help direct and guide and bring it back to you. The recommendations to move forward for Parks and Rec is that what appears to have been over the years, nobody was working with them or however it was, that felt like that they were doing everything on their own. Because again, everything comes to you in the end, so we'll see how that works.
And we're asking that that person be familiar with grant writing?
Yes.
Good.
Yeah.
We're also going to also, as a grant opportunity, get ourselves in line for the DNR passport grant, which is a hundred and fifty thousand dollars annually. Like you do not have to have a master plan in place to get that.
Our consultant is very much familiar with that, so she's definitely put a lot of that together, of course, with the five, it's hard to do next year. The two other big items in there is at the bottom. One is that, we're on the valley, but one of them is that they're in need of another mower that wants to have their, starting to go. I mean, you know, they're on the last leg and so the recommendation is to buy a mower. The other one is they need a, something like a tractor of some sort, horse car, out there at that park also. So there's some equipment needs that that particular park is needing in order to continue the operation they have out there. We'd like to go ahead and put this into the equipment line item, which we do. When sometime in the fall or in the winter, if we want to move it forward, we can go after bids and see what kind of prices would we give. And so we can make, the Michigan can make up a line at that plan. But, you know, if you're going to continue to operate parks, you've got to have an equipment to operate.
Before we move off parks, this is not related to this request, but about six, seven years ago, the Parks Commission decided that they needed three subcommittees, which means they have three subcommittees and a Parks Commission meeting every month. And that causes some of the competition, I think, between, between the parks. And I would urge when our new facilities director comes, that'd be on the list, to talk about how we might restructure that. We only need one.
Yep. We, that discussion's already, has already started with me that tried to get them to go this way instead of feeling like they're in competition because.
Yeah.
Then the Parks and Rec Commission represents all the parks people. And right now, some of those, sometimes it feels that way, I think it's the again, but it's what it's moved into unintentionally, which if I was serving one of those and I was dedicated to that particular park, I would have a little bit more stronger connection to that. But that's not, we've got to find a way to, we're dealing with all of it throughout the system. And I know that on the master plan, that's what we're trying to do to get towards also. That's what it's all about.
So that, that the consensus is, or was it the, because I'm trying to keep track, that mower and the tractor are, are moving forward, that's?
We are going to need them. I know of the two, I would say that the mower is probably more critical than the tractor, but they're both important for considering making this happen.
Well, didn't Scott trailer it back and forth?
They probably did.
Yeah, I mean, that's what he's been doing.
And I understand there's a fire out there that these are housed in.
At Miles Kimbley.
And.
Right, right.
So that is, that is new. We never used to do that. We haven't had tractors specific to each park. We had one tractor and big trailer.
I'll call up on that.
Okay.
Yeah, because we don't, we don't need three tractors to sit all over.
All right.
And maybe that's the intent, they house it out there at Miles Kimbley.
Same with the mower.
And they tractor back and forth, basically.
Possibly it's stored there. Okay, so, so that thing, I think we should come back and, and look at those things. If we do go out for bid, we should do the RFP and, and look at the Mahendra or the, I think it's a tractor, the Eagles carries down, there's a good one, and some other ones that will be, it'll be green paint. Okay, to back up.
Well, okay, well, I'm not saying you should get it John, here we're just having this tractor we're going to replace. I mean, no, you're going to.
No, it's long term equipment's compatible, I'm good with anything, but I want to back up though. So the gazebo, you said we have an issue with the gazebo now because it's not handicap compliant?
Eighty eight compliant.
It's not eighty eight compliant.
But it's also great in father gear, it never has been, and it's pretty iconic. So what are they recommending or?
Nothing to do with it.
We'll talk on that.
Two elimination.
And we don't want to eliminate that.
Take the tractor, push it down.
No.
Well, wait until the master plan report comes back and it can be reviewed.
Okay, so it's just, we're not, so, so this whole section, we're not saying you're need to any of these presently?
Wait until the master plan comes back and completes its work.
Which will direct it, yes.
That will give you better direction what should be, especially if the public input.
Makes it a little difficult because you have twenty twenty five budget though, if we're not going to look at doing any of these. You said you just want to plug a one sixty five number in the parks, but not.
You already have, you already plugged one hundred and ten thousand dollars. It's sitting over here, ready to be used at any time.
During the end of twenty twenty four.
No, we didn't have precedent, we didn't set up a.
It's a good, so roll into twenty five?
In four seventy.
It'll be one six.
Two hundred and ten thousand dollars.
You moved the fifty five, you move it, you authorized the movement of fifty five thousand from last year in twenty four that did not get spent. You moved that out of your surplus.
To add it to our twenty fours.
And then you added to your twenty five, so now you've got a hundred, and we've moved a hundred and ten over there and it's sitting.
Hundred and sixty five.
Calling.
Yeah, I thought we had to.
You've moved twenty four, no, you've moved twenty three and twenty four into this.
Into that, and it doesn't have to be spent in twenty four?
No.
We can roll it into twenty five.
It's already there, it's just sitting there.
So we're going to fund an additional amount for Parks and Rec?
Yes, ma'am. You'll see it in your budget.
We're going to need it.
All right.
And that way.
Approximately, it will be then, as I said, a hundred and sixty five thousand dollar plugged into Parks and Rec for something.
For future capital projects at the park that have been identified through the master plan, whether you have to use it for grants. Kathy says our grants are free, you don't need the master plan to do, but this way you need all your options open for how you want to proceed.
Take what's off, yes, it's purely directed.
Yep, okay.
All right. Next is some other requests that are there. As you know, we are investigating the BSNA financial software and the annual maintenance that may have to take place. We're also, we have no recommendations for you at this point, but we also have the, we're also looking at, so you can look at apples to apples, what would happen if we were to take a lot of the issue or a lot of the items we like to see, we like the BSNA, and can Harris match that or even or do better than that? So we're going to, we're still working toward that to get all the information on the table. We'll probably, we'll bring it back to the commission to make an informed decision on that, whether we get to it by the end of this year or not, and we may want to wait until the next commission to deal with that. But we are putting together, Kathy and also.
Leanna.
Leanna are working on that to work to see how all this could fit together. So we are continuing to work, work with that. So I wish, you know, but you have some ideal numbers that are out there. And one of the biggest concerns that are out there is BSNA is going to be wanting everyone to go to the cloud or wanting us to go to cloud, that is causing, you probably need to learn more about what that means or doesn't mean, or how that affects our operations or doesn't affect operations. So that's kind of, that's where we are on that. So I wish I could, but you can see some of the numbers. That may be something that we would take out of, you know, after we go through all this, maybe something that gets done later in the year, but that's, I know one of the numbers that we're talking about that can add to the, we're going to have specialized accounts over in the projects.
DTR.
DTR, I think, all these issues.
John, sorry, I know.
It's not like I've worked with this for the last twenty five years, but the DTR account. So we'll see how all that plays into that.
Thank you for what you're doing, looking into the potential of Harris, because I heard from a couple of people, and they said their townships don't have BSNA, they're Harris. So they said, yeah, you can just do this and this. So you're onto that, I'm thankful. I also had remembered some, one of the last times that we discussed it is that the pricing was based on our SC, excuse me?
Delta.
Based on our.
I was, I was, we've talked about BSNA and Harris for so long and we keep changing our mind and, so I'm glad we're going out.
Well, one of the things is BSNA bases, or used to base their price on how rich your county is. Guess what? We're, we're on paper a very rich county, so, so based on SEVs. So their price is based on SEVs? And is, how does that, it's formula.
It is.
Is it still like that?
It is the, they're pricing algorithm, we were in a Zoom meeting together and I pointed, I pointed that question out, I asked specifically.
And is that the pricing algorithm? So Leland County, of course, has very high SEVs, we would pay a lot.
It'll be, it'll depend on what part of it is and how much of a part it is of that pricing. I'm sure it has to do with users and a bunch of other things that go into it, right?
But, and then you factor annual.
But it's not the time.
It's not for today.
Not the time.
Get the bids, look at it.
What's for today is thank you Richard for looking into this.
We're not making a vote for bids, but we're going to try, Kathy and others are working hard to get an analysis off put together to show an apple, it's close to an apples apple, so because, you know, what can Harris do that can do the same thing that BSNA's done? And it'd be great, you've got a lot of that stuff in there.
Maybe they'll come talk to us, because maybe they can come talk to us too.
Well, everybody would kind of come talk to us.
Yeah.
But more than likely, it's not going to happen for the first few years.
Right.
But I mean, let's see, you know, but it's one of those topics that we are still getting into to.
I just thought it was important that you see the price tag.
Yeah.
So you have no risk.
I would want to tell you what.
Does that four oh two include implementation?
Uh, it's a point. And some travel expenses of the training team.
Implementation training.
What standard?
So we just wanted to see the numbers.
Another card.
The other, next two items are, and what I had asked Kathy to do is to take with the CIP that the planning commission produces and receives the copy. These were two other projects that they had recommended in, in their, the very report. Put it on here, I will say that on the Leland Dam control room, roof, depending on the, we may be, our game plan is, or this Steve, Steve and my game plan is, whoever's doing the, if they have to call it places, whoever's doing the walkway, instead of creating this as a separate project, we are going to ask that vendor, who wants to take a look at and give us a number. And if it's reasonable, then we're going to come back and try to add it to the, to our clause there. But, you know, Steve doesn't think it's as bad as the condition as the reports say, but that's, that's been Steve's and my game plan. He strongly encourages us, let's do it this way, see how it comes out. If it doesn't work out the way we think, then we can do that for assistance. So that's a point we'll do.
So back up a second again.
Huh?
I missed, I missed your comment about the exterior security cameras.
I missed your question.
Well, you haven't talked about it yet, that's why you missed it.
Well, we're down at Leland, Leland Dam, it's just further down the list, so it's a reasonable question.
We didn't talk about it.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, we should.
Leland Dam Bridge.
No, no, the exterior security cameras.
Exterior security cameras.
All I just said was that, that was listed in the CIP that is not, in the planning commission's CIP report too, so I don't know anything about it or whether.
I know they need to be upgraded, and all I was going to say is that the possibility that we could maybe ask for some MMRMA down the shore.
The sheriff and the judge were speaking about that issue at the latest safety committee meeting and, and I think the current cameras don't allow you to relauncis place clearly if you're trying to report a crime.
Yeah, they spoke pretty strongly at the last budget round about it too.
It is a holdover. It was in the bottom of the twenty four list as we remain on the CIP. As Richard said, we compared the CIP to the current one in the elected request, but we didn't want to lose those items as talking points, so it's back and you can.
If we're looking for more two percent grant applications, that could be another one.
Something.
I'll put it down there and I'll put it on the agenda for the next week to see. All right. With that, you want me to talk about IT stuff? That would be a losing proposition.
Leanna's behind you.
You don't understand, I have to go on and go ice cream help on a regular basis, so there you go.
We're not the only one. We'll have Leanna start with equipment questions, and she's been being the two sixty one to two, almost to the end of the book, like a list of inventory to allow them on.
I'm trying to get my agenda back up.
And this is what they have in there.
Oh, okay. My, all the computer replacements I had requested? Um, so the twenty five workstation, they're just the, roughly what I calculated that needs to be replaced because they're getting older and out of support, out of date. Computer, computer copies are requested at that time, so put them off until next year. And then the Cyber Horizon's computer, I can budget in that next year, but it couldn't wait, so I actually already purchased that for the license.
The Cyber Horizon computers are already been purchased.
Is that in there?
Yes.
So we can back that up. And how much of the fifty three thousand is that one?
Uh, that computer was three thousand, it's thirty three dollars.
Oh, so you're still at about fifty thousand for those workstation replacements? Okay. That happens.
The other items are, I put them in the budget, just kind of as a placeholder, thinking that's going to be operating some additional security software procedures that I'm not committed to yet, because I don't have enough details on it, but if it's something that I think is useful for us, then I want to take that in next week.
What is the MTR?
Managed Detection and Response. So basically going to be an agent installed on everything here that kind of, it kind of does threat hunting, or like nobody would, but for anomalies that might be happening, we can contain it before it gets widespread.
Well, anything we have to spend on security is well worth it, I think.
I kind of thought it might be, getting some recent.
Grand Travers.
Yes.
Yes.
Anything I can do to make us more secure, I'm going to try to.
And when I called you that day and they told the commission, was that the first you heard when I called you that said there was a threat in Grand Travers?
No.
I mean, did they notify you right away when they get?
No, I heard about from a friend of mine because of their E Alert system that went out.
Yeah, the commission called me, then I called you.
Yeah.
Okay.
I definitely not notified.
That was, that was not right, no.
Kathy, while we're still on other.
Kathy, while we're still on other, before we move, MERS, extra payment, whatnot, I know we've made one, but typically at the end of the year, we take a look at where MERS is and see if we can put some more money in there.
It's already budgeted in the budget now at $250,000 and we'll be doing that this year in '24. It remains at 250 in '25 as a recommendation. You certainly as board could contribute less or more, it is yours, but it's much different right now.
And, and does that keep us in good shape?
So far. I mean, Richard recorded on our funding of our pension.
You're in better shape probably than most people in the public sector in this state unless you decide to bond pay it off. You know, you're on funded liability, at least from what the audit showed, which is a year late, you know, because that's not, that's all the information that came in 2022. So you don't get that information, you're on the liability, you're, I mean, you're not 100%, but you're in decent shape. Market crashed tomorrow and everybody, but right now you're in good shape. I mean, I wouldn't, I would, that would not be my highest concern.
Well, we did, we, we did a lot of work a few years ago to eliminate that. So, I mean, what you have out there right now is our retirement.
And I'm not even saying.
Well, I'm not, I'm going to take credit, thank you.
I'm giving you the credit for that, but I'm just reminding you, it's probably not the highest worry that you need to have at this point in time. Thank you.
Keep it coming, I need it.
Okay, that comes under our next product category, the deals with staff and requests and what we have up here. And in your packet that I handed over is the memo that I received as related to the requests, but is that me trying to explain all of it? Do you have any copy of the memo?
And this is basically, we help. This is, this is a big job. I don't know if you've all read through this, but we have, the general consensus, one IT person for everything, users. We've got 132 now, end of next week, and it's just me. Not only that, I mean, everybody's here, but I also assist with the township people. We've got website questions, they access our systems through VPNs so they can use BSNA through our servers. And it's kind of phased out with the clerk's office. All the township clerks went up and questioned us, they also had VPN access to that with their calls, questions about it, every time they use. We've got over 170 computers here. We don't get any less, they just keep adding on more and more. And that's just like the day-to-day stuff, there's all projects on that. Our office, my, they have their APEX offering. I mean, it's a cloud hosted system, but it still requires, you know, software as well as here that requires my login credentials to do that. Karma roof's going to be put in place so, you know, the website access can actually get out and connect with the hosted systems. Same thing with the prosecutor's office, basically going to be the same procedure now. Make a web next one. A website, a new website, and it works for like a year. That takes a lot of time to finish, so it's just, you know, there's constantly ongoing things. It's on.
You recommended, you know, at one point you did have an IT technician up until, I think, last year. This is the year you did, but before that, I think we had two positions together. Didn't you have a reference in an IT person?
We had a director and we replaced, well, we were using Safety Net, so we've only ever had one.
No, we had David Warren. We had David Warren, we absolutely did.
Oh, he was part-time. He was odd, part-time. Yeah, for a short while.
Yeah, I don't, I don't, I mean, that's a lot of things to take care of, but that goes back to old history because I have recollections that I wasn't here with, like when we gave a pretty large contract to Safety Net. The purpose was to not have to have much support in-house. And when we asked them about that, they said, yes, but we're actually, we still need the support and we're asking you for a lot more money. Let's see how it comes out of that discussion. So I don't know, I'm not opposed to this person, but I think we need to, we need to look at our vendor from a quoting point because that, that's, that's the history, if I'm not mistaken. They were supposed to like provide enough outside support at the point when Ron left.
To supplement it, right.
To say, okay, well, you don't need people because we're going to do all this stuff for you.
That's what I look at, all of the needs we have. I can't imagine a bigger need than making sure we stay on top of our technology. We do everything at our meetings now, you're there. Every time I go into the 911 office, you're there. I know you spend a lot of time in the sheriff's office and the prosecutor's office. We need to make sure that we're staffed appropriately. And I do think we ought to put Safety Net here and see if we can reduce their contract.
Last time we asked them, it went up.
We cried that last time and they, it went up.
I don't see them getting any luck across. And I think too, when you first negotiated your Safety Net contract, and Leanna will correct me if I'm wrong, it was on the number of servers we had, it was very, a snapshot in time. And since that snapshot of that first negotiated contract of Safety Net, we have added how many servers? Nine and we've got 19 now. And that is part of the increase in costs because there's more servers to manage. And so I'm just saying, this snapshot of initial negotiation, that snapshot has changed.
Understood, but that, that snapshot also included like, you don't need people, we do it all.
So we're looking at one full-time additional, is that right?
And I, and we have to remember, like Chairman Wessel pointed out, if our computers are down, nothing happens.
Well, yeah.
This is pretty darn important.
Le, you're, you're raising your hands, so we ought to call you.
Thank you. I was, I was trying to think of outside the box of a way not to put another county employee on because obviously then it becomes the benefit package, you know, another, another employee, another Blue Cross, another Blue Shield, or another Blue Cross, Blue Shield, you know, MERS, et cetera. Is there a way to, and to contract a physician to help you with, to alleviate your issue of, when you're doing the installation of, of the new software or the installation of the computers or changing out that house? Could we contract with a person for a couple of days a week where they just do that, the two days are here? And then that frees you up to be putting out the fires and those sort of things?
I suppose we could check into that, but I would be hesitant to give somebody administrative access that's not really invested.
Well, my first thought was, I was going to suggest that this would be a contractual employee out of Safety Net, but maybe we ought to be looking at another vendor other than Safety Net if we can't, if we can't get what we're looking for from them. I know there's, there's at least one other company out that does this sort of thing.
Do I understand that Safety Net, you have, not counting this, you still have two additional years on their contract. So you're not going to be doing a whole lot of changes with Safety Net for at least couple of years.
Well, we're not exclusive, are we? So in other words, they're not exclusive, there's other companies that.
Well, I'm saying that.
That are bonded, obviously, it's a security, it's a big issue.
Yeah, but that would happen two years from now.
No, I'm talking about on top of that, if we can't work through Safety Net to, with their contract, we can work through them with their contract to get a person here if it's reasonable, if we're less than here, because what I'm getting at is, it was kind of tongue-in-cheek, we don't want them to raise the contract even more for the services we're getting now, but only basically look at the snapshot of a contractual person to be in-house as we did before. You know, they were guaranteed, we were guaranteed certain number of hours and available weekends, et cetera. Something like that to avoid the full-time employee.
So are you thinking of having a Safety Net person come here?
Well, Safety Net would be ideal because it's already in our system. If we can't work with them, there are other companies that are also bonded that you would have to be comfortable with and trust to come into our system to assist you.
You don't, using that model, you don't grow your next IT director. I think this is a very important function and if we're going to continue to have our needs expanded, we ought to be thinking about what happens when she gets a different job.
We can't, we can't do that.
We do that in all the other offices.
Yeah, I guess, uh, no, I disagree with that. Especially technology because it changes so fast. And these new, yup, yupping, yupping coming, these new up and coming kids are.
That's a Freudian slip there.
Oh, yeah, yeah. They are incredibly bright and, and you hear it all the time. I mean, they, they're probably high school kids that come in today and practice the system, you know, and know everything, everything about it in no time. So I, I appreciate the fact that, yeah, someday we're going to need a new IT director. I don't see that coming for a long time.
Well, but that someday is not today.
Correct.
What are we going to do that this individual cannot cover all the needs inside this building at a time and a matter?
Can you come back to us with the option of looking at a contract? Is that, can you investigate it?
Certainly ask the question.
You can ask the question.
Please do.
I think it's fully recognized that there needs to be help here. My comments, and if I, if I, you don't want to take it wrong, I don't not believe you need help, I just believe we're being overcharged for the other help.
Yeah.
How low you are either.
No one knows.
They, yeah.
Yeah, it doesn't feel right. It's quite possible that she didn't understand the contract when she told us what we were told, passed through.
I, I would think that any IT person should be a full-time employee and should be loyal to the county. And the word loyal means a lot, okay? Know the employees, know the equipment, and updated training, I mean, that's what, that's where we're at. Thank you.
There's a, there's a commitment issue, issue inherent in that.
There is, you know, you can't play a price on loyalty or love of county, country, whatever, and that's what we need.
Can we bring Safety Net in to have another discussion with them about reducing your contract? And then I see at least four people that say we ought to move forward with, well, with that.
Leanna's answer?
Are you sure you want to do that?
No.
You just did that this year.
Yeah, I, I think, let's give her the.
Those other safety procedures that Safety Net would be offering would increase our contract, so if we go that route.
You must don't need the person to help because you're overloaded right now.
Yeah, contractual gives us an exact dollar figure. You look at a full-time employee that, that there's the additional costs that we might not have to be responsible for. We have other, we use other contractual employees and I don't see a lack of loyalty just because they're not on, quote-unquote, on the payroll.
Boy, I do.
Well, we have a disagreement with what we do, we're going to proceed, see, on both avenues, we'll come back and we can make the final decision, so. But I don't. I didn't, I didn't hear much of a disagreement. I, I, I don't know, I think the disagreement was what we're paying Safety Net. But I think there were five, five of the six people at this table that said this is a priority.
Yeah.
One thing I did say, I met a couple, it wasn't last week, but a quarter earlier, you with Safety Net and the items that we're working through and having to work through and changes that are going out there in the world, which I don't understand a lot of it out there. And one thing I recommended to Safety Net is they should be coming before the county commission in early, you know, and again, they can come here and talk to you, but you're not the one that's going to be making final decisions. The next board, you know, that's what I'm thinking about, the next board's going to have to make decisions for the next number of years.
Year or year.
With all due respect. See, I keep that back here, too. I've recommended that they come before the board in early 2025 to say, here's where we are, here's what we do, and here's how we do it. And they can make a decision, you know, and what they could be looking forward to. That way, there's no question, the last time that Safety Net, a comment about Safety Net was made at a board meeting, you know, I can't remember which one it was, Kathy sent you an email of the breakdown of what they do and how much it was costing them, whether you saw it or not, I don't remember, but I know she did. And say, here, they do this, they do this, and they do this. You know, now whether you agree with it, but, you know, in two years, you've got a, you've got a two-year contract, at that point, county should look at that and they should go on out, standing up in RFP for proposals to say, here's what we want, here's what we're being provided, what's the cost for it to be. But as you're right, it's all about security.
I would like to, we have one other item, I, so I think most of us agree, we need help. That's not a consensus. That's not a consensus. You don't have a consensus. You have an outvote it, but you don't have a consensus. I would make that clear because they said we were working on a consensus and I absolutely disagree with, we had three ICS snowballing here, add this employee here, we got another employee here, I got another employee here, pay raises, we're looking at more pay raises, we're looking at more pay raises on top of pay raises, and I, I've got to fit in here. So Leanna, you're going to come back to us with some options, right? Or at least a contractual option and a, and you already gave us the option of an employee. Isn't that what you said you would do?
I will talk to Safety Net and see what they might be able to offer.
So I think something we.
I'm not, I'm not in support of that. I, I don't want a contract because if we get some, put you here contracted now and next month, it's somebody else. We, I think, as Rookie said, we need somebody that we can count on for the long term.
Look at Gary. Gary has worked out, we did this with Gary, and he has worked out exceptionally well. We have DMW's commitment behind him and they give us him. It's worked out incredibly well rather than adding, adding that person on.
Well, we're talking about, we're talking about security, okay? We're talking about something, one mistake can cost thousands of dollars. Look, look what happened to Grand Travers. What did they pay? I'm not sure, but.
And how many employ, how many employee, how many, how many IT employees does Grand Travers kind of have?
I don't know offhand right now. When I was there, they had ten.
Four? They had ten. They had ten and they were still hit. It's not a matter of that.
Doug hasn't weighed in here.
Oh, I think I did. I was actually just doing some math on where we're at, that's all, I was the one, so just for references without adding in a cooling tower, a three or four, maybe things were at about 550,000 of things we've discussed today. And cooling tower will bring you over a million and you've still got a couple of positions to fill. So we're somewhere between 500 and 1.2 or 3 million additional things we're talking about.
Except we're not talking about doing the cooling tower this, oh, unless Gary comes and leaves.
Yeah, yeah, it's been thrown out, so I'm just, that's just informational, piece of information.
Meanwhile, Parks and Rec needs some summer help for mowing.
The other thing, yeah. The other thing that Parks and Rec has requested is that is to add an additional six weeks of part-time help, which is additional 192 hours. You know, and I guess the grass must have started growing sooner and it quit growing later, so. So that's one thing that they have asked for, is an additional $5,200 based upon what we have.
And instead just, could, we can find some, we can hire somebody for that without putting an employee on staff. We don't change the staffing levels to that, right?
Well, your question is, couldn't we contract all that mowing now?
I'm talking about hiring a part-time, what are they called? We've had him in the past.
Seasonal.
Yeah, seasonal.
Missionary work, whatever.
Without the staffing level, we do have to help and that's what, this is.
That's what it says.
The number of approved hours, you already have.
Just approved hours, but not staffing levels.
These are seasonal people, you are correct. What we have now, what we're doing now, we're just going to add more weeks to that to those seasonal people.
Okay.
Yeah, okay, I see what your question is.
All right, that's why I want to make sure.
That is correct, we're not adding.
So the staff hours help.
It's just the hours. Right. In your staffing levels for Parks and Rec, there's a highlighted section for part-time positions shown at 528 work hours, which equals 66 days. This year, we took the 528 divided in between. This year, we took the 528 divided between two part-time people, so they each worked 200 and some hours. They're just looking for a few more hours to go through September into a little bit of October so they can put the quality up.
Okay.
Because otherwise, they're done in August or mid-September.
And we come out of Parks and Rec budget then?
Yes.
They got money in there for that?
Well, that's general fund, so it's going to have a little increase in the figure that Mr., or Commissioner Rexroth is working on.
Those are approximate figures, just don't quote me, but I'm within order of magnitude.
Now, the Drain Commissioner, you know, part-time secretary, that's something that we're still working on. Again, I need to do an analysis to see if all of our front-end help are being fully utilized, if there's any spare room that they can do. But this is something that we're going to need because that has been only going downstairs with that, we're not going along in the long run. I don't know what Steve did before, but I may as well maybe pick it up some of that slack.
I can tell you more. Actually, the person who came to bring the commissioner was the former executive assistant out of the administrator's office and did filings and whatnot for the Drain Commissioner. And that's not part of that job description.
It's a very small number of hours, part-time, I mean, for the Drain Commissioner. To, to have a part-time Drain Commissioner and have a half-time staff sounds excessive. I think we need to provide some support, but I don't think we need a half of the positions.
Well, we're getting a lot more dreams though, remember, too.
And we don't have a desk.
Our treasurer's hand is up.
No doubt.
He apparently has an opinion. Starting to dream.
Doing it is, but it's not, anyway, once it's done.
I can't hear you, John.
His hand was up exceptionally high.
Adding up to Drain Commissioners' billing and bathroom work as far as the financials go is handled by Kathy and my office. So any help that could be available would alleviate more supplement right now. And help for the Drain Commissioner would be more sufficient. That's my only two cents. Yes?
So 20 hours a week approximately, you think that's high?
For temporary?
Um, yes. Does it have to be half-type person? Well, in fact, you've got back going six, which is 20 hours, which puts them one hour less than benefits. So it doesn't have to be as high as even 20 hours to his billing. Um, who comes to mind and who was...
I modeled this after the assistant in MSU. I just picked a function that would maybe be something that we could quickly generate numbers. And it's, it doesn't have to be that, I just picked that because it's a function that we sometimes vote to as a 20-hour, a 0.5, 6...
Yeah, yeah.
Did this request come from the existing Drain Commissioner?
The outgoing Drain Commissioner did ask for this. And this is something that I noticed, we still pick up. And as more drains come on, I'm just looking for, you know, just the correct line of support for the Drain Commissioner so that I'm not overstepping or providing inappropriate information. And the chain of command stays with them, the Drain Commissioner's purview. And I'm just facilitating a function, a bill, or whatever he needs. The detailed part of it, which was his system. So for payoffs, for communications with townships, and so on and so forth, those would be enhanced if somebody were, for example, on staff two weeks a week.
I, I have to imagine, I don't know what the compensation for the Drain Commissioner is. What is that compensation?
It's in your staffing level on page, oh, I don't know if it's on page nine. It's 15, right, but it's pulled up.
So you guys are saying that you don't have a staff for that?
I'm saying as drains continue to expand, TV, yes, and the function of the Drain Commissioner that could be utilized better under the purview of Drain Commissioner than be your Catholic. As long as, I don't have the authority to warn what I want to do.
The Drain Commissioner's 24 approved salary is $20,638. We are measuring for family health insurance, obviously we don't know the new Drain Commissioner. It's a single-person couple or family, we're always budget high. This is also a more eligible position. And that's what I've estimated, another 1,900 and some dollars. So the cost of Drain Commissioner, your approved salary right now is roughly more than 2,000?
So when year did it go to 20?
Last year, I think.
Last year?
It was pretty recent.
I would have to look back. It was, it's...
It used to be very low and in the last few years, you finally realized it's an elected position. It's 24/7 and you bumped it up, which is still low in the elected official.
So what we don't know is if our new Drain Commissioner is going to be, you know, able to do their own billing.
Or...
You don't bill. Or bill, I, I, I...
It's correspondence.
Paperwork.
It's correspondence with the Drain Commissioner's executive you can establish. The billing actually goes through John's office, the BS and assessing program that you improve for him to have. And he maintains that over the course of each drain. If it's 10 years, 15 years, 30 years, I know each drain has its own terms. That is a function in John's office and his office works with utilization. And the quick company transfer, the first D, the whole thing, they all work together. But the general funds, enough start of a drain, if there's, I don't know, Shamber, I don't know if it's Shamber. I mean, it could be hundreds. They all have to be correspondent, they all have to get those respects back in. It's, it was just something to think about because I know that the former Drain Commissioner, the former executive assistant, not the administrator, and she'd get a lot of that for him. But that's what I'm saying.
Yeah, I don't know if it's prudent, but I don't know if there's a deputy.
I looked that up.
Yeah, talk to us.
It's up to the Board of Commissioners. It's not a statutory requirement like it is for the work or the territory officer or the certees. It's up to the Board of Commissioners if they want a deputy for the Drain Commissioner.
What?
And I can provide you the statute.
And what would be the benefits or...
Succession.
Oh, gotcha, yeah.
Right hand.
Then that person would be going to take over the next, I don't want to talk about.
But then it's still elected, so...
Position right now, just due to recent...
I don't know.
Just to know, right.
Exactly, information. No, I mean, our office is willing to take on and help as much as we can. Uh, just, you know, as these drains are expanding, becoming more complicated, the force policies are becoming more intense and times are, you know, times are...
But we don't need to put you into a position where it's almost, or could be a conflict, that there's authority that you really don't want to...
Yeah, that's not going to happen. It's just making sure that the next Drain Commissioner has tools to do succession.
Okay. All right. Thank you, John.
I have a previous comment.
Yeah.
Here, we're at that point, I can keep going, I have 10 minutes. What do you want to talk about next week? I mean, we got doubts here that we'll see if we can get some of these corrected, which is important.
I do need to interject real quick. I was just looking at the calendar for next Tuesday.
Uh huh.
And Tuesday the first, we have executive here.
Right.
Then, um, you not only have that, but you've got solid waste at 1:00.
We slot ourselves in. We changed that.
You did.
To October 7.
Okay, so you changed.
Yeah, because that was too close.
And I also noticed...
You guys will just have to let me know if I can...
We will.
So, thanks.
That's all I was concerned about, so I'm sorry.
Yeah, no, it's been, it's been changed.
And the lighting, the windows, trying to do, just kind of get the direction what you want to go to the next. We're trying to get through this long list of items here, quick questions, let's see what we can come up with from this. So where do we want to head next? Do you want to start at the very beginning, talk about the general fund, just read through the book?
I think we should be running through our revenues for sure at some point, and our funds.
Okay.
And I would request that we limit that meeting to a couple of hours because it will be after our executives. So I'd like, I'm really into... Are we doing a lunch break in between or two?
You have to have...
Some sort of break, a half hour minimum.
Yep. Scott.
We just have to be in Glen Arbor, Elphie.
Oh, well, yeah, pour that. There's no way.
You know, we'll set a time, I think we've already kind of set a time, but it'll be, I think we set a time a little early, so we give you the executive session, what, a couple of hours? Because, you know, I think that's probably a reasonable amount of time, but it will start after that. We should make a break to have a...
Bring through the lunch or whatever you want to do, can, we'll work that out for you, so... If we could be done by 2:30?
We will be, that's what we got to be done by.
That would be helpful.
County, county's buying lunch.
Yeah, let's do two hours, two hours.
They can buy lunch over all this.
Thank you.
Okay.
You're ready.
I'll give you some things to think about between here and the train. Is what you discussed right now, which is that's your operating budget, which is basics, you know, the things that are pretty difficult in this book. To balance what's here right now, without any of these considerations you talked about today, the balancing figure from the fund, the general fund, is just under half a million. What's not in here, uh, here increases in wages because you have un-negotiated contracts. You have one negotiated contract that is in here, it is budgeted. Your increase that you voted for the next board is in here because you lose the salary of your position. So giving, keep that in mind as you're contemplating this, that to balance what's here now, which includes one negotiated contract, to balance here is just over half a million out of how to balance general fund. So Mr. Commissioner Rexroth has tallied up kind of a rough thumbnail of what you discussed today. That's a half million, hopefully, so now you're at a million to balance this. Now, we budget for what we do know, we don't budget for what we don't know. So we don't, we don't unlawfully anticipate retirements of anyone. You can't do that. And you need to keep that in mind for...
Did you say you wanted to start with revenue?
I, I said that we, at some point, we need to cover revenues.
And that would, that sounds like a... Yeah, did you need to be here for that?
So we usually have a million unbudgeted.
Fund down.
You do.
And you're saying that we have committed today tentatively to 500 of that?
In this operational budget, which is like your palace of paper, your pens and pencils, stationary, ordinary things, and one negotiated contract. And that is built in here and it's to balance a half a million. Commissioner Rexroth, his thumbnail added up what you've talked about is, conceptually, that's another half million. What is not on the table, we have not talked about, is the negotiated contracts, the impact that will have. Not only is it the union contracts, it's the non-union policies, or non-union wages. So keep that in mind because right now, between what we do have in here, what he added up, that's a million to balance.
Needed.
Needed to balance. That is in over and above your revenue. So you're going to hit your general fund balance to balance your budget. Now, to start 24, you use just shy of a million to balance. We have been able to adjust that down to 733 because we've got realized revenue that came in that we hadn't anticipated, like interest, that the treasurer, he's been able to earn more interest than we budgeted. So this, this is just part of the revenue discussion, we'll go into it your next meeting. Is that helpful?
Yes.
Okay.
Also in the front of your book, your transfers, these are budgeted in here. This is important for you to know what flows from the general fund to your funds. Because you have funds that have no income list. They don't create widgets, just, you know, this type of thing.
Or, or the widgets they have, that's not, that's not cover the expenses to cover IV, 911.
Anything that's on this list transferred from the general fund is in here.
Already in the book?
Yes.
Okay.
But you need to see that flow of money because if you impact a budget back here, a fund, that means it comes from the general fund and that makes this number get bigger again. Is that right? Corey?
Thank you. Thank you, Richard, and thank you, Kathy. And that takes us to the end of our action items and are now here for a public comment. Anybody would like to speak, public comment?
Yeah, I would.
Mr. White? Do I, come to the table, please, so they can hear you?
Well, thank you for giving me the time to talk to you this morning. I have a specific issue that I would like to bring up and Ty and I have already had a couple of conversations about it. And I don't want to sit here and, and make allegations or statements that I'm not totally sure of, but I do have enough back behind me to ask some very specific questions about a particular project, specifically the solar panel project. I sat in a meeting last week and heard it said that you're going to get $1 million of free money and over 35 years, we're going to get $35,000 of your savings, okay? And I was told that opposing that idea was bizarre, okay? But the only problem I have with that is that when I was in Pepsi-Cola Corporation, we were not even allowed to bring a capital project for consideration unless the payback period was 18 months or less. So a 35-year payback, or 30-year payback seems ridiculous. So I'd like to know, why are we doing that? Second thing is, what are the benefit, what is the benefit, for it or otherwise, of this county of installing a solar panel project when the Cheryland Electric Co-op is completely capable of giving all the electric power this county government needs to run itself? And not that, Cheryland Electric Co-op has been recognized as a very responsible, in fact, a fairly green public utility. I believe 61% of their power right now is green and 19% is renewable. So at this point, it seems like they're very capable of giving us a power resource that is responsible and efficient. Second, or third, the county response that I saw on, on the website specifically commits to solar panels because they provide, quote, "clean, waste-free energy." Since the Environmental Protection Agency itself claims that, quote, "most solar panels contain hazardous waste, that must be managed in accordance with their, their procedures," how is this county going to get solar panels that create no waste? I don't think that's possible. Language in the county's response to the NPSC also seems to commit the county to fully replace, that's quote, "fully replace" the county's fleet of EVs, does not say plug-in hybrids, it says EVs. It further commits the county to installing charging infrastructure for those vehicles. Since that is a mandate on which the solar panel project depends, how could a member of the VOC claim that a million dollars, trying to get in the grants, quote, "free money"? You only get that cash by committing your own cash. So to me, that's an expense, that's part of the project. Interestingly enough, I mentioned a conversation Ty and I had and he specifically told me that he did not commit to that language and in fact, he had deleted it. Unfortunately, on the county website, the agreement that's still there, still has that language in it. And when I talked to various members of this government and asked them to provide me the signed contract, last night at approximately 10 o'clock, I received a copy and it's the exact same thing that's on the website right now and it still has that language in it. So given that that's the case, it looks like this county will definitely be committing to buying EVs and installing charging infrastructure. Since these requirements alone will greatly increase the, the cost of the project, it seems like this is going to end up being a huge waste of county money, that the payback period will be never for this project. It will be a cost, okay? Not only that, there is a lot of research that indicates solar panels reach hazardous materials during their life, okay? And it's not me to say that, it's the EPA and all these private groups are talking about this. And if that happens, then we're going to have cleanup issues. And I don't see anything on the county website or in our proposal back to the NPSC that says we have taken into account the disposal issues that come with these solar panels, okay? with these solar panels, okay? So, once again, ask the question, when you looked at the financials for this project, did you include all of the costs and all of the downside on it? Because we still got maintenance issues. I heard a member of this county, of this commissioner, or county Board of Commissioners, talk about how it's going to be nice to drive your car and need these solar panels, and park them under there and keep, keep the snow off your windshield. Who's going to keep the snow off the solar panels?
Other creatures.
This, the Biden administration itself, their Energy Department specifically says that solar panels, the solar potential of this region of the country is rated as an F on a scale of 8 out of 10. So, once again, why are we doing this? Greta, what they're assigned into legislation allowing the reactivation of the policies of nuclear power class, that is green energy. I was told, and it says in, in the project that we responded to, that green energy, I mean, excuse me, the solar energy is green energy, but also a, as I already said before, it is not waste-free. So, as a result, we are, we are going to generate a waste problem in this county. Also, my understanding, as I was told by various members of this government, that the government that allowed us to build this government center committed us to keeping it green, to keeping it basically the same ambiance it had before. We want to keep it natural. I don't feel the solar panel project is keeping it natural. So, bottom line is, I would respectfully ask the board to make some decisions.
Mr. White?
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
Any other public comment? Any Commissioner comment? Commissioner Rush?
Yes, I would encourage Mr. White to talk to some other local resources, too. And I can give you a list of some people that I would encourage you to have a conversation with. Thank you.
Commissioner White?
The discussion of going to EVs was a general statement about future possibilities only. There's no commitment on our part to get EVs, unfortunately, because I happen to love not buying gas. We do not pay for the panels. It is all grant. We have to front money and will be refunded. We are not paying for panels. It's interesting, Palisades, yes, is green energy, but we're still going to pay for it. And we're not going to pay for the 30, we are going to save $3,000 a month. On our energy bill, we're going to pay Palisades, whether it's green or not. It's still money out of our budget. So, I am befuddled by the argument that this county should not take a grant that will save us $3,000 a month. Aren't we just talking about trying to save money? Like, so there are just so many things that, in what you are proclaiming, that are not true, that I'm curious why you would do that, but-
Commissioner Lutner?
Well, for, for your information, are actually, with Palisades, our projected power bills are lower than now. So, that, that is very good news for the county building since it's going to be powered by Palisades, so 100% green energy and, or carbon-free energy. To, to, I, I, this kind, this, this discussion about saving money, when we did try to ask those questions the evening of that grant request, and we were not allowed to get the answer for those questions, so they're very legitimate questions. Who's, who's going to snowplow around and through those solar panels? And if they get bumped, who's going to repair them? How much is it to insure them if there's a hailstorm coming through? What is the cost of dismantling those solar panels in the future? There's just so many questions. There, there is studies that say they do reach. And we're forced to go to EV cars. A lot of people are opposed to EV cars because of the children mining lithium in other countries to provide the battery for electric cars. There are those that object to that as well. So, there's just a lot of concerns about, I'm about out with. My comments about this budget today is space concerns. So, we have an IT director now whose office is actually in our planning department, considering, considering an assistant planner. Where would we put that assistant planner with our IT person, our assistant, IT person already in planning? We have a Drain Commissioner. Where are we going to place this Drain Commissioner if we give them an assistant?
I've got that figured.
So, the assistant as well, if we had an assistant, where will we house this assistant? We cannot continue to have finance work out of our administrator's office. So, now we think we saved so much money by getting the basement built when we could have built the basement and had offices for future use at the time, but we spent $200,000 on the basement. We have no offices down there. And now we're talking about spending these walls that are going to go up in our administrator's office, fundamentally changing our administrator's suite down there is not going to be free. And that is also going to cost money. And meanwhile, here we are, out of space.
Thank you, Commissioner Lutner. Anybody else? Absolutely not.
I, I haven't made my comments yet, but it would be appropriate for me to turn this into a candidate forum, but I'd be glad to have that coffee and talk to you about it.
I think Scotch would be better.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Sure, sure.